This meeting is being recorded.
I will give it one more minute to see if we can get a couple more. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wacca County Council meeting for September 29, 2020. Please call the roll.
Red Brown? Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Bird?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ben Ellenboss?
Here.
Carol Frazee?
Here.
Kathy Kerschner? I can't hear you Kathy, but I see you.
I see you and I marked you as here.
Red Brown?
Yeah.
Okay, all council members are here. Kathy, can you explain to us how we're going to do our flag salute tonight?
Going to try sharing a picture of the flag and if everyone could mute their microphones while we play a recording of a previous council meeting where you've said the pledge because of the internet speeds being different and we don't want to have a delay, but you're welcome to say the pledge to yourself during that time.
So this is our own original material from back when we were in council chambers. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Kathy. The only announcement I have is everyone on the, everyone on the meeting, on the, yeah, on the meeting tonight, please keep muted unless speaking. Other than that, standard rules apply. So we will go into the county executives' report.
Good evening, council. And Kathy is going to put up the screen. I sent you an email with my PowerPoint as well as more explanation about the budget which Tyler can go through. I'll be very brief in respect of the time we have. Okay Kathy, next slide please. So we did had, this is our vision going into 2021, 22 budget, but what happened is that fiscal impacts in 2020, public health measures put strain on us and we had economic restrictions and which impacted our revenues, retail tax and the income on the property tax were reduced, but we were, we are pleasantly surprised that they are not as reduced as we predicted in, in March, April, May timeframe. And we did discuss earlier in the finance committee meeting, the cumulative negative impact on the revenues have been $4.35 million, but, and the additional county response was added significant unbudgeted expenses. But we, okay, next slide please. So we did, the council directed and the administration listened and we did do some serious measures for mitigation and employees' furloughs saved us $1.785 million. And we took initiative with each department heads and each departments to curtail whatever expenditure they could. So that has saved us around $650,000. The hiring freeze, it was put on in March, is saved us almost $750,000. And the funding from CARES Act, which is, it covers the unbudgeted expenditure, our unified command and our, you know, IQF facility. So that is responses at $5 million, it will bring back to our general fund. Next slide please. We have received substantial grants that in, we received in the round one, $12.3 million dollars and then in round two, $4.5 million. And in round two for the health department, we received $4.5 million. So in addition to that, we did receive some community development block grants as well as we, health department received some other grants for the health department. So if you look at the portal, I did had another slide, but I don't think it got into the, I had all the details for $25.8 million and I'll send you that. Somehow I was not able to give my latest slide to Tyler to send it everybody. So anyways, we have received $25.8 million worth of grants and I just want to let you know that some of the CDBG grants have expiry date till 2022. So, but most of the CARES Act dollars received by health department and by the county are sunsetting at the end of this year as, as you are well aware. Next slide please. Capital projects. In the last meeting, Rob Ney presented a report for, you know, showing that how we are looking and I am, I am creating a vision for next 20 years of our capital needs rather than just looking at what we can do in next year or following year. I think that we did showcase you how these dominoes can fall and we can, we can, we have a plan for that. At the same time, I'm thankful to the council for approving $100,000 early in this year in spite of COVID expenses that we were able to do some preliminary design work on the Northwest Road Complex and Sheriff's Office as well as for our Public Works and our ETS. If those things fall in place, I think that will be a great positive for our county. And, and that would help us with the thing we were talking about today about the state street health department facility. So all these things, we are trying to align them and, and there are a lot of uncertainties, but we have a plan that, that bit we will act upon as the resources allow us. We totally understand that we are looking at the division street facility as well, what things we can do there if need arises for that. So next slide please. Oh, it's the same. It's the other way around, I think. Going down. Yes. One more. Thank you. So on the water settlement, I think this is one of the priority I shared with the council. And we now know with not full certainty, but Department Ecology has put in a budget request in their own budget to the legislature for NUKSEC Basin and a couple of other places in our state. We don't know what legislature will, will approve, but we got to be prepared for that. So I have prepared a white paper on the, our settlement negotiations within our county, all the affected parties and water rights holders. And I have had discussions with the farmer group, City of Bellingham, PUD, and the Lamination and the NUKSEC Nation. They have preliminary approved the draft and as well as I'm asking for a position paper, which I described before to the council that I'm asking all the parties what they think the ideal settlement should look like. And, and that way we'll have some issues on the, on the table and see which one need more work on that. And we are going to make a request to Department Ecology and to the legislature to support our efforts for five years with this, with some money. Barring that, I think that we are proposing that we should have a senior manager position to carry on these important negotiations and will use flood fund money. And as we bring the budget next meeting, you will know the details. I just wanted to let you know that this is how we are proposing to continue this, this pathway. Next slide please. A child and family action plan. I think this was a priority given to us by the council. And we are thankful for that and we have had several discussions. We have involved the City of Bellingham for some discussions on that. And what we are proposing is that we proposing $150,000 budget from us and $150,000 or very similar amount from the City of Bellingham as well as the, the group, action plan group has promised that they will be able to get nonprofits and philanthropist community to pitch in the same. So I think this is sufficient money to, to get started and let it grow into a regular program. Then we can seek as we learn more programs and what actions we're going to take, it, we will seek state, local, federal, nonprofit funds, grants, other things, but it'll take us a couple of years to, to be able to eligible to do that. And the other thing is in, in the first year, we are using this under the Wacca County Health Department where the, where the request was to make it a office of the child and family. I think it is a little bit immature, to be ready. We should know what programs, what services we'll offer and all this, rather than spending money on administration, we would like to spend money on the services itself and then build the organization around those services as in the ensuing years. So that is our plan for 2021, 22 and we'll keep you updated. And we will also learn and, and we'll bring any changes if there are any needed to the council. Next slide please. This is the racial equity meeting mission. I think we have started discussions for last, but we're going to have three months almost. And this is something people are proposing, something like we have a domestic violence commission, which is a countywide body and being funded by county, city, as well as other nonprofit grants. And same thing is that we will use formation of that, of the model. We have our IPRTF. And that has been a very successful model. I think this will involve a larger community discussions. This cannot be done with one group or 20, 30, 50 or 100 people. I think there should be more. Like I would like to see that maybe a large majority of our community citizens are involved with this. Like we went through when we were doing the issues about the jail issue. I think, so I am asking the small group to start that kind of action. And I just, we are pleased that the Tekinat Foundation has stepped forward and they have offered some funding to the people working group who is working to put the basic formations together till through end of 2020. And we believe that it may take us mid 2021 before we have some kind of formation of the commission. Of course, we will keep the council informed as, as we go along. So we are budgeting our money, maybe $100,000, $220,000 for 2021 and maybe $150,000. And this will also have support from the City of Bellingham in similar amounts and nonprofit philanthropic community of a similar amount to make it a viable commission. And it will take time to, to get established. So I will stop here and I would be happy to answer any questions if anyone has that. Thank you Kathy.
Okay, questions for executives to do. Council member Frazee.
Thank you for that. Sorry. Get my video on here. Thank you for that, executives to do. And yeah, I like, I like how you broke it down. The water, child and family action plan and racial equity commission, hopefully. With, and I appreciate you focusing on these things. I think they're really important. And with the child and family action plan, I guess I would like to hear later or in the future, if it, if it, if that, I, that money is awesome, like coming from us and from City of Bellingham and then whatever the, um, other entities that are going to help out with that. It, if it's under the health department though, I would like to hear from them later on, like how they would do that because you know, right now they're at capacity like we talked about today. And if that's even possible during COVID. So, and I would like, I would like to hear as we go along and as that money's distributed, how they're going to do that. But thank you. I like these priorities and I'm excited, you know, even in this COVID time, what, what's going to happen? Focusing on the right things for the future. So thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, executives to do. Did Tyler want to, I had seen in the email that Tyler me, I wanted to speak to something. Is that correct?
You know, Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, I really don't need to take additional time from the council this evening. A lot of what we walked through was financial information this morning from the committee with Brad Bennett's update. There is some additional information in that PowerPoint that I did send to council and Kathy about 21, 22 projections. So I would just ask council to review that. And if you have any questions, let me know between the next council meeting and I'll go a little bit more thorough and in depth on those projections at the October 13 meeting.
Okay, thanks Tyler. So we will move on to minutes. We have four sets of minutes to approve. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Donovan moves, Frazee seconds. Any corrections, deletions, additions or anything comments on those minutes? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Okay, those minutes pass unanimously. Now we will go to public hearings. We have, the first public hearing tonight is AB 2020-352. It's an ordinance adopting various amendments to Wacca County Code Titles 12, Roads and Bridges, 16, Environment, 20, Zoning, 21, Land Division Regulations, and 22, Land Use and Development Procedures. Is there any, uh, do we have any kind of staff report before we open the hearing?
I do have just one blurb. This is Cliff Strong, Senior Planner with Planning Development Services. And I, I just wanted to point out that I made a couple of textual changes in the explanatory stuff, but nothing that amended the, the code amendments themselves. But I did, in preparing for tonight, I noticed there was one error that I would like to correct. And that is regarding the addition of the zoning or critical areas, minor variance is a type two application in the project, project permit processing table. And that's page 27 of Exhibit A. I noticed there were no check marks in the columns indicating that a notice of application and site posting are required. And type two applications do require public notice. So she, so there should be check marks in those columns. So if, if the council chooses to approve this tonight, the motion ought to include that addition. Other than that, I'm just here for questions.
I guess I'd have to ask the question, is that, Karen, you're on the line, Karen Frakes. Is that a substantial enough change that we would have to reintroduce this or what do you think?
Could you repeat what the change is again, Cliff?
Sure. So in the, in the text, and this is not part of the amendments, but type two amendments always require public notice and the site being posted. When we filled out this table with this new type of permit, we've, we failed to put little check marks in there. So the text actually reflects what needs to be done. The table is just supposed to be kind of a handy chart to see what you have to do. So personally, I don't think it's a substantive change.
I don't think that's a substantive change.
Okay, thanks Cliff. Karen, council member Donovan.
Yeah, we're talking about just like one check and.
One check in, in both the columns. One column is notice of application required and site posting required.
So the notice application column, where would that check go? This is just going to get in the record there because.
In, in the new row that says zoning or critical areas variance comma minor.
This is, this is page 27?
Of the, of the Exhibit A, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got this. But say it again. So I can't share my, but this would be good if we get it up on a shared screen. So we just knew exactly what we're going at here, but I'm pretty sure.
If I have the ability to share, I could do that.
It's literally just a check mark on a table.
It is. And it's just, the table is just a handy dandy way of seeing things. The text in the rest of the code already includes the fact that type two permits have to have public notification.
Okay, everybody okay with that? I'll take that as a yes. Okay, anything else Cliff, or should we open the hearing?
Nope, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and open the public hearing. Kathy Holka, do we have anyone signed up for this public hearing? Okay, thanks Kathy. Is there anyone with a hand raised?
Yes, we have one attendee with their hand raised, Miguel Perry, if you would like to speak for AB 2020-352, the ordinance adopting amendments to Titles 12, 16, 20, 21, and 22. It looks like the hand went down. If you would like.
They might have been for open session.
There are no other attendees with hands raised for this item.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. What's the council's with? Mr. Ellenboss?
One more question for Cliff, if he's still on here.
I am.
Hey Cliff, nothing changed on this since it came out of committee, right?
A couple of the explanatory texts, like where you raised the issue of loophole, I took that word out and put something else in there and.
Okay, thanks. I move for approval.
I'll second.
Ellenboss moves, Donovan seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Kathy Kerschner? Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Carol, I didn't hear, I didn't hear your vote. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was like, yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Next public hearing is AB 2020-358. It's a resolution adopting the six-year Water Resource Improvement Program, otherwise known as the WRIP, 2021 through 2026. This is the council acting as the Wacca County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. Do we have a staff report on this?
This is Paula Harris from Public Works. I just wanted to make note that for those of you who were at the surface water work session last week, when I went through this, I realized that under project number 22, the Marietta acquisition, I had mistakenly included the total of previous expenditures under the 2021 column. So this version is corrected. I was just basically totaling the previous expenditures to stick it on the right-hand column for the total through 2020. So I noticed that last week and corrected that. So that's the only change from previous version you saw.
Council member Donovan?
So it's the substitute that we're putting on, then that's the only change?
Any other questions before we open the hearing? And we will open the public hearing. Kathy, is there anyone wishing to speak?
There are no attendees with hands raised.
Okay, we will close the public hearing.
I move to approve.
Second. Donovan moves, Frazee seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, call the roll please.
Red Brown? Red Brown? Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes, my Internet's still works.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Go back to Red Brown?
Um, next up is AB 2020-360. It's an ordinance to amend Wacca County Code 12.60.040, Appointment and Responsibilities of the Citizen, Address, and Road Name Appeals Committee. Do we have any kind of a report on this?
Jim Carter with Public Works Engineering. And no, I have no staff report, but I'm available for any questions.
Any questions on this before we open the hearing?
I didn't catch what Jim just said. I don't know if he just cut out or just.
He just said he didn't have a staff report. Was just here for questions.
Yeah, we could, we covered this in the committee.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. Ms. Holka, is there anyone wanting to?
There are no attendees with raised hands.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Move for approval?
Second.
Frazee moves, Donovan seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Our next public hearing is AB 2020-363. It's a resolution in the matter of Wacca County, of the Wacca County Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, or the STIP, for the years 2021 through 2026. Is Public Works here with any kind of a report?
Good evening, council. Jim Carter again with Public Works Engineering. Again, no staff report, but I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thanks, James. Um, council, do you have any questions? We will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
There are no attendees with raised hands.
Okay, um, we shall close the public hearing, and this is one there's a substitute for, I believe.
Councilmember Buchanan, that was the last one, which was the one that ripped.
Oh, okay, I got my, my rips and spits and all that mixed up, so sorry about that. Okay, so, uh, we'll open the public hearing. Kathy, is there anyone that'd like to speak?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, um, so, uh, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the floor for the, can there be a motion?
I'll move to approve, and I want to say one thing.
Second.
Donovan moves, Frazee seconds, Councilmember Donovan?
I just, if anybody's watching our weird Zoom meetings here, we did cover this in, um, our committee work, and this is a six-year planning document that is being updated and just, I mean, we're kind of going through these things pretty quick. I just want to make sure that's out there.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Um, we're, we're doing the, um, the, the road one, right? Okay.
Yes.
Um, sorry, you see my camera going off because I'm still trying to eat my dinner. But, um, uh, I just want to say, Public Works folks, anytime you can put in a roundabout, do it, I love them.
Councilmember Bird?
Thanks. Uh, is, uh, Dr. Hutchings on, by chance?
Say it again, Tyler, sorry.
Well, yeah, is John Hutchings online?
I see his, I see his icon. Is John, are you there?
I am indeed.
All right, perfect. Um, the, I'm going to make a motion, and John, I could use your help looking at this again, but um, to get some context first for it, the wildfires that have taken place over the last couple of weeks and month, maybe, I mean, it's gone by so quickly. The, it's gotten some more phone calls in, um, from people in my district that are concerned. And so some of you may have heard about in, uh, Washington and Oregon, where there was uh, small communities that the wildfire got there so quickly that they weren't able to, uh, evacuate. And unfortunately, uh, it caused severe loss of life, uh, in those communities, uh, as they weren't able to get out of the way. You might not have heard that, uh, out there in Southern Valley, there was a, uh, a fire that was started. It started around a hundred square feet and it quickly grew to a thousand. And it caused, uh, the dispatch of Lake Samish firefighting team, as well as the Southern Valley firefighting team. So both of those firehouses in their entirety came out to stop it and put it out. Um, the only additional backup that they had was Geneva that was being held in reserve. The, but what that did is it's gotten a lot of people who are concerned about looking at those kind of similar circumstances and saying, hey, you know, we have, if you look at Southern Valley and the size of it, I mean, it's, it would qualify as the third or fourth largest city in the county as far as the number of people. And that doesn't include the people that live in Geneva and that housing development there. And there's really only two roads in and out, one to the south, which is a fairly windy, two-lane street. Um, and then the one in Bellingham, which again is, it essentially two lanes. It's a lot wider, but, uh, it's still only two lanes. And so how would you get six or seven thousand people out of that area if you had to in, in this kind of situation? Uh, the other thing someone told me, and I don't know if this is true or not, but the, the wildfires can move up to eighty miles per hour, um, which is one of the reasons that those citizens in those communities got trapped. But I, I don't know the accuracy of that, and that could just be, I would say a Facebook thing, but I'm still banning Facebook, so, or boycotting it the, uh, for the most part years. So the, uh, I bring this up because it does have a lot of people concerned. I, I've spoken to, uh, John about it. I've spoken to the planning at the city of Bellingham about it, uh, as well as, uh, the, the GM out at Southern Valley and their security team, uh, the city or the school district, Bellingham School District, and community members in general. Uh, and there is a desire to see if we can move up or moving up essentially the assessment of the Lakeway Drive improvements and dealing with those sooner rather than later. So with all of that backstory, John, I, I could use your help, and there's three of these up that are on here. Let's say Lakeway Drive. Um, so on page attachment A, mine's marked page six seventy. The, there's R twenty-seven, which is Lakeway Drive Terrace, City of Bellingham, the Cable Street, uh, pavement rehab. I think that's the one that the city of Bellingham was mentioning that, that was coming up in two years. And they thought that might be a good opportunity instead of just repaving things and putting the same lines back, using that as an opportunity to repave and, and, and look at or assess, uh, adding more lines during that cost. So the other ones are on page, uh, six seventy-one. And so it's R twenty-one, R twenty-seven, and R twenty-eight. Lake Louise, Austin Street to Lake Watkin Boulevard, Lakeway Drive to Terrace to Cable. That looks like it's the same one, and then Lakeway Drive corridor improvements. Would it be a motion for all three or four of those, John?
Yeah, let me see if I can, uh, if I can help you out a little bit there, Councilmember Bird. So, um, uh, first of all, uh, Jim Carter, I think you're still on the line. So if you could, uh, be ready to jump in here as, uh, as I start addressing, uh, the council members' thoughts, that would be great. So as we spoke, uh, sort of generally about, uh, the other day, uh, Councilmember Bird, about uh, the prospect of, of transportation system improvements that could help remedy sort of general, uh, general traffic congestion, uh, multimodal needs and, uh, and the like, uh, including emergency services, utility garbage services, mail services, all of those sorts of things. Addressing a, uh, a, a broad range of uses in a transportation corridor is typically something that, uh, that that we engage transportation planning experts to come and, and give us advice about, uh, the alternative road alignments and, uh, and, uh, and amenities that get, get built into the, uh, the road system, uh, that can help address some of those issues. And of course, uh, the first step of that is to gather the information necessary to understand what the reality is today and then figure out what it is that we as a community want to improve on, and then, you know, we go from there. And, uh, studies like that have, uh, have preceded, uh, all of the corridor improvements, uh, that you witness in Bellingham and out in the county, uh, including most recently, uh, on Alabama, for example, uh, which was a big one that the city of Bellingham dealt with. And, uh, they've also, uh, done a fair amount of work out on Lakeway. Some years ago, realizing that, uh, Lakeway is a, uh, is a corridor that, uh, is likely going to remain in county control and county ownership, particularly between, uh, the city limits and Geneva, and then on out with county for some time. And that's down the road, perhaps ten years down the road, we will, uh, have to face some level of service difficulties that have, uh, that have implications for future growth, uh, and, and, uh, planning-related, uh, sorts of things. The, uh, the traffic folks in our department saw fit to put in our, uh, transportation improvement plan, that corridor investigation, that corridor study, that you referred to, Councilmember. And, uh, it's that particular, uh, line item that would allow Public Works to, uh, over the course of this next a couple of years to, uh, begin work on evaluating the alternatives, the implications and alternatives for that corridor and try and align them better with what the city of Bellingham has going. Um, I think I would turn it over now to Jim to talk a little bit about what that means in practice. Uh, before I do, though, I should just note that, uh, those other, uh, those other road capital construction projects have to do with, uh, with maintaining the existing infrastructure that we've invested in. And so, uh, there is a question of, of timing associated with this. We need to maintain, do the paving maintenance work, um, in a timely fashion so that we can preserve those, uh, those investments while we do the planning for, uh, for future capital improvements. Uh, so I would ask you to stay focused on that corridor study line item in the capital construction program. And Jim, can you, uh?
Oh, so just to, just to jump in here real quick, I think we lost Councilmember Bird about two and a half minutes ago.
Oh, my heavens.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to stop you, but.
Did I call him?
I don't think so. He's been having internet issues all day, so it's, I'm, it's, it's technical in nature, so. Well, anyway, we're all, we're, the six of us are, I just wanted you to know.
Okay, I, I have a good sense of what he's, what he's interested in in terms of, uh, of understanding what kinds of improvements could be made in ter, in terms of the future, uh, out in that neck of the woods. And I, I think we can help, uh, help him get there. Uh, what it probably means is, uh, a motion from you all to at least, uh, uh, put a, put some, uh, out-year funding, perhaps twenty twenty-two funding, uh, under that line item and, and, uh, give us the council support we need to, uh, to advance that, uh, uh, that work. I mean, we, if you, if you think back to what we're working on now in the way of construction projects out in the urban fringe, so we're working, uh, very hard to finish, uh, what was, what was laid out for us twenty years ago out on Marine Drive and make those improvements, the same thing, uh, the same thing going out Aldrich and going north. Uh, so this is one of those urban fringe, uh, investments. Once we start going down this path, we will end up with projects for, you know, ten years, five to ten years out that will, uh, uh, that will need a lot of community support, and, uh, we want to stay focused on that if we're going to go down that path.
Excuse me, Councilmember Buchanan, um, Councilmember Bird has rejoined the meeting.
Yes, I saw him, he joined by, I saw him join by phone. Uh, Mr. Donovan?
Um, uh, Mr. Hutchings, I'm just trying to get to how we can get to address Mr. Bird's, uh, concerns here. So are you asking us about re-ranking priorities on the tip here, or it's, what exactly are you looking for?
No, I, I think what we need is, uh, is a recognition that this, uh, line item on the tip, uh, probably needs some additional funding in, uh, I would, I would say, we, we've got some, uh, money already, uh, I think in twenty twenty-one to get started, but, uh, uh, really, we're looking in probably in twenty twenty-two by the time we'll have this scoped out and ready to go, uh, which means we would come around and readdress some of these issues going forward.
Which, which specific item?
Uh, so that is, uh, Jim, can you help me out? What number is that on?
Yeah, Jim Carter, uh, Public Works. So, um, the item that, uh, uh, Councilmember Bird first mentioned was six-year tip item R twenty-eight, Lakeway Drive Corridor Improvements. It's, uh, and, and that would be the item that Don is talking about modifying, and we have no money in twenty twenty-one. We have only money in twenty twenty-four, so we would have to add some money probably in twenty twenty-two and maybe twenty-three.
Right, and then the five thousand is just that placeholder thing?
Placeholder, yeah. And, and just for the council's clarification, you know, we originally had that in there because the city of Bellingham was looking extensively on Lakeway to expand their bike and pet improvements. And we felt that Watkin County cannot, cannot sit flat-footed on that as the city makes changes in Lakeway, and so we added that corridor study. It, I'm not sure I would say that, uh, not to, um, undercut any of, uh, Director Hutchings' remarks, but I would not say that that was the intended purpose to look at capacity and improving capacity, but more for multimodal and pedestrian improvements. And then Councilmember Bird also mentioned items R twenty-seven, which is Lakeway Drive, Terrence Avenue overlay or pavement rehab, and then two other pavement rehab projects or pavers in the Geneva Lakeway area called, um, uh, Lake Louise Road and Austin Street. And like exec, like, uh, Director Hutchings mentioned, we have those on there because all of those roads have over twenty years on their pavement life, and we're concerned about them, uh, you know, starting to fail. So we put those in as purely pavers, not intending to increase the size or the width of those roadways and as stimulus placeholders for, as we would potentially get money from this whole, uh, COVID situation as it plays out. So just to kind of make everyone aware that that was our strategy, and I kind of ran through that on the October or the August fifth, uh, work session that, you know, this was our deal. We had a number of critical, uh, pavers in the program, and, uh, that kind of helps explain some of those issues.
Okay, so we're not being asked to re-rank the tip. I mean, we all understand wanting to have better exit capacity in event of, of a fire out there or something, but these are, these aren't necessarily, these aren't projects that are necessarily going to do that. They're.
No. But R twenty-eight, the Lakeway Drive Corridor Improvements, could be modified to address that. You know, the corridor study could look at capacity, could look at, uh, other options. It would cost us a little bit, but, you know, surely very much within the scope of that, uh, of that, uh, line item in the six-year tip.
So what I'm hearing, uh, from Mr. Carter and Mr. Hutchings is we got to put something in there besides that five, the five thousand or something.
Correct.
So Councilmember Bird, we did lose you during, uh, you know, a portion of, uh, Director Hutchings', uh, comments. Uh, so are you up to speed? Do you, do you have any more questions?
Uh, no, I, I think that, that I'm good to go on my side. So my motion would be to, uh, well, before I get to that, I, I guess it would, I, what would be the dollar amount that would be necessary, uh, that, to expand R twenty-eight to include the, the assessment of, uh, of the lanes and the road and traffic?
Uh, Jim, could you address that, please?
Jim Carter, Public Works. Um, I'm saying, thinking about seventy-five thousand to a hundred K if we do the full meal deal to address multimodal and, um, you know, the capacity issue. And I think, uh, Councilmember Bird, you're looking at, at more than just Lakeway. You're thinking as we go out towards Southern Valley, and that's why I bump it up to a hundred K, just to make sure that we have enough to review the whole, uh, the road systems all the way out there.
And I guess I, I would, uh, to keep in mind that, uh, uh, you know, as we're, uh, we've done just a little bit of sort of pricing these sorts of things out, we're talking at some bit, uh, some very rough planning level estimates, uh, for which we would come back and, uh, and ask you to help us budget, uh, going, you know, in, in the mid-biennium budget. And we would, uh, we would have some better, a better handle on the scope of the project and, uh, and what that might look like. So we could talk that through in the interim, uh, but certainly to get something in, uh, for twenty twenty-two, uh, now would be a good time to, to add that.
John, would it be? What, what would be the downfall of adding a hundred thousand dollars to that line item or seventy-five and, and asking us to bump it to twenty twenty-one? Is that as far as starting the process? I assume starting the process would be looking at the budget, reaching out due to our, he's, uh, for assessments, scoping it, um, finding stakeholders or that kind of stuff, but, or is that different?
No, I think we would, we would probably, you know, initiate that in the fall of twenty twenty-one anyway, with the idea that we'd get a contract up and underway. It's going to take a fair amount of work to, uh, uh, front-end work to get this all up and going. And, and the reality is that our, uh, our traffic folks and, uh, and our engineering team are, are programmed out already for the work that they're, the priority work that we've already got going. So, uh, keeping in mind that, uh, that currently we have two, uh, pretty major priorities that will, uh, that come to fruition once we get finished with these big capital projects out at Marine Drive and, and, uh, out at the, uh, Birch Bay berm as, as well as all of our bridges. And, uh, that, those revolve around upgrading some of these intersections that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Ellenboss was just talking about. Uh, so we have, uh, Jim, three or four, I can't remember off the top of my head, uh, major, uh, engineering, uh, preliminary engineering assessments and, uh, and preliminary design, full design projects to bring these all the way to construction, uh, of major roundabouts in the county. So that's where our focus is today. So that's where our focus is today. And, uh, so I think what we're asking is that if, if we're going to turn our attention to, uh, to something as, uh, as major as contemplating, uh, realigning, re, uh, re, uh, engineering a corridor like Lakeway, uh, that's a, that's a big bite. Uh, and it will undoubtedly involve, uh, you know, all kinds of right-of-way issues that have to be solved because I can tell you from experience that the right-of-way, um, out Lakeway, particularly where it comes down to, uh, back down to the lake, uh, does not align with, uh, with the road. It's been like that for a hundred years. And, uh, so those sorts of things have to get addressed and, and there are, uh, garages that are, the corners of them are in the right-of-way. Uh, the clear zones are problematic. I mean, there, this is a big deal. Um, so I want to be careful that we don't jump in with these expectations that we'll be able to, you know, solve some, uh, traffic congestion problems overnight, maybe some low hanging fruit. Um, and then there will be competition for use of the right-of-way between bicycle and pedestrian and vehicle and crosswalks and the like. And all of those things will have to get vetted through the community and, you know, so you can see how this process works. Uh, it's not quick, uh, but we, I agree with you. It's a, a, a part of our system that needs to be addressed going forward and I'd love to see us get started on it.
John, would it be, if the motion was to move it to 2021 and with a hundred thousand dollar kind of line item budget, uh, with the understanding that it would be towards the end of the year and likely or more likely in 2022 that it would start? Would that be okay as an understanding?
I, I think we would be happy with that as long, as long as there is just a real, a, a real sound expectation on the part of the council, uh, about what this process is really like. There are, there are no free lunches in this deal.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't know that I do, but I, I have a feeling I'll find out. Um, the
You're a good sport that way.
Thanks. Um, yeah, what I'm thinking is, is that I'm totally okay with that. That way you have the flexibility, your team has the flexibility of, if something comes up and it makes sense to start earlier, you can. But if not, it bumps out to 2022. Well, hey, that's, that's what we were expecting anyway. But it just gives a little bit more room for, for you guys over there to maneuver with things as they're coming in. Um, and I maybe possibly speed things up a little bit in, for boots or, you know, on the ground kind of projects where we'll see some economic boost to them in the, in the future too. But it, so if you're okay with that and that understanding, and I'm happy to reword it to be more clear than, than I'll make it as a motion.
So right now, Councilmember Bird, we do have a motion on the table to approve. So this would be an amendment. So you need to be very specific about what you want to amend.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Barry.
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to
John, was that a verbal thumbs up?
Uh, yeah, Councilmember
No, that was not
Is that directed at me? I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, yeah, I, I missed something. Is that a motion, if, with that motion to amend, the, okay with, uh, planning or, excuse me, public course? Yeah, I, I'm going to make it, John, you tell me if I need to fix it. Um,
You have a point of order.
I move to
Todd's got a point of order, so let's
I heard it.
I have a motion on the floor, so I don't know if there's a, this can be a motion to amend it. We also have a problem where we have council members who can't see what's going on and I, I don't know how we fix that. But it's always a, the motion was to improve the, the, the tip and that had a second, so, um, just, I'm just trying to, so if I don't, and I'm, I, I don't throw this out there as well as the, but that was my point of order. I have, I have another point of, um, just substance, but.
So Councilmember Donovan, you are correct. We do have a motion on the, on the table to approve, uh, the, uh, the resolution. And Councilmember Bird wants to amend it. So he can make a motion to amend on top of that motion and then we have to vote on that amendment. So Tyler, that's how you need to, to kind of contextualize it.
Okay, we'll do. Um, can I do that now or should I do that now or is there?
Yeah, you can, you
Councilmember Donovan's correct. I can't see.
Yeah, you have to do the amendment before we vote on the other motion.
Okay. So we, I move to amend the, the tip to move item, uh, R28 to 2021 with a, a, a proposed budget of a hundred thousand dollars. With the understanding that it would likely begin at the end of the year and more likely, uh, the beginning or sometime in 2022.
And as far as that goes, perhaps, uh, perhaps it would be appropriate to just split it between the two years so that that is just clear.
Oh, I like that. Um, so I'm going to correct that. Uh, I'm, I'm withdrawing that motion to amend it and here's my new motion to amend. I make a motion to amend the tip to take R28 project and to move it forward with a $50,000 budget in 2021 and a $50,000 budget in 2022. So that it may begin in 2021 or later.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Ellen Boss.
I'm going to second it for discussion.
Okay, I'm going to start with Todd and then the executives to do.
Okay, I, um, first, I guess if we move money around in this planning document, where we, we just have money, we can move around or we can start doing that. And I'm not sure how we do that. So are we taking that from other things in this planning document? Um, I'm assuming it's coming from the road fund, but I guess I, this discussion started with the need to have emergency evacuation from Southern Valley and those areas. And I, I think there is a discussion we could have about emergency planning and evacuation plans. Um, and I, I don't know, shoehorning that into, we're going to increase capacity of Lakeway. I think that, that's, those are maybe, they completely overlap, but, um, anyway, so, so I guess one question is like, when we just, because I can look at this grid and think of things, I want to put money into this slot or that slot, but where's that coming from? And what happens when we start going there? And, um, and also I just want to put that up, like, if the problem is fire hazards and escape from fires, there's, there's other discussions we need to have about planning for evacuations and funding. That would be separate from whether we make Lakeway bigger or bigger.
Okay, Councilmember Brown, you've had your hand up for a long time, so I'm going to call.
Um, this, uh, I'm very respectful of the issue of fire. Uh, the issue of three or four, I ended up sitting in a football field in a Volkswagen van, Volkswagen Beetle, uh, as the town I was on was threatened, living in it was threatened by fire. I, I think trying to upgrade Lakeway to be a good fire escape corridor is just physically impractical. I think the more, the better use of money would be to examine alternatives such as refuge areas or, uh, other techniques in other communities that are physically constrained and cannot upgrade their roads have employed, because the idea of upgrading Lakeway to the point where you could do rapid evacuation, what are you talking about? A four-lane highway? I mean, it's not, it just wouldn't be physically possible. So I'd like to change, shift the focus from being dependent on upgrade if you want to deal with fire.
Executives to do.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, that when council, uh, proposes something like this, the council should actually identify the source of funds also. The second point I want to make is a hundred thousand dollars you put in one year or two years only tell you how much it will cost. It, it, it will be very soft cost and, uh, and you're looking at 25 to 50 million dollar project. And a hundred thousand dollar will not get you any closer to the solution uh, we are discussing, uh, together as a group. And I think that if we want to explore other possibilities, then just say, oh, Lakeway is the answer. We don't know that Lakeway is the answer. So I just want council to be aware of that. Thank you.
Mr. Ellen Boss.
Um, Mr. Hutchings, can you come back on the line there?
I'm with you.
Okay, so now I can absolutely, uh, appreciate what Councilmember Bird's got going on here. It's his district. It's a safety item as well as probably a convenience item for all that live out there. And, you know, quite frankly, there's some projects I'd like to, I'd like a roundabout at, at, at the Scott Ditch on Hannigan Road where I come out of the field with my tractor because I've been hit twice there. But in the grand scheme of things, um, it probably needs to be prioritized in, in a way that, um, like Councilmember Donovan and Councilmember Brown were saying, um, you know, if we do this, what aren't we going to do? And so I guess my question to you and your staff as people who study this and prioritize this, you know, sometimes these things go down, like we get a phone call from somebody in the department says, hey, this really needs to happen. Can you help us? Did that happen here? I mean, or is this something that you guys think would be a good idea to move up in priority and, and up the budget on or, or where does this fall in the grand scheme of things? And I apologize if, I, I apologize if I'm being kind of blunt and, and direct, but, um, is this a, is this a good idea? Because I don't study the roads like you folks do.
First of all, I, I appreciate the straight up question and the, uh, the answer to that question is the, the fact that this corridor study exists on this six-year program means that it is a concern for the department. Now, the fact that it's not funded in, in, uh, substantially in these, um, in the near term, uh, reflects the fact that we haven't gotten to it yet. And, uh, in fact, there, uh, there are two reasons why it's on this list in the first place. And, uh, a convergence of those two reasons, first of all, there was some, uh, uh, some community activism over a crosswalk out there that resulted in Public Works needing to take a, uh, uh, frankly, a defensive position on, uh, on that issue. And, uh, that defensive position happened to align with the fact that we recognize that the level of service for that section of road will, over the course of the next, I, I'm just picking a, a, a time in the future, uh, 10 years or so, uh, be challenged. In other words, we have a, uh, the council has established a level of service C for the, uh, for that section of road. And at some point in the future, uh, not too far future, the traffic, um, congestion on the road will result in a level of service D in which, at which time, uh, the planning department will be, uh, either we invest in these improvements to raise the level of service out there or the planning department has to take some action around future development. Uh, and that's all part of, uh, of, what's the word I'm looking for? Darn it.
Concurrent.
Concurrent. Thank you, Jim.
And John, it's
That's all, go ahead.
Level of service D is where we can go to before we get pinched on. I just looked that up today.
Perfect. So, so the bottom line is that, uh, in short, there is reason for us to take a look at this. And so, uh, regardless of, uh, of, uh, council members, uh, Bird's, uh, particular motivation, uh, needs of his constituents, uh, to look at this from one particular, uh, you know, through one particular lens, uh, we in the department certainly, uh, don't want to stand in the way of, of potentially advancing this, uh, analysis. Now, the analysis itself, as, uh, the executive pointed out and, and Councilmember Donovan pointed out, is not in and of itself going to, uh, going to solve any problem out there. It's just going to point the direction that we go from here. So, uh, so certainly learning more about that in far in advance of us having level of service issues out there is, uh, is a preferred path forward for the department. In terms of what doesn't get done, I think we can make, uh, we can make our way through this analysis without a huge, without huge implications. Uh, however, when we get to actually choosing projects and all of that down the road, that will mean something for sure.
Mr. Ellen.
Yeah, sort of a follow-up question. And again, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I, I kind of have to. Would you, would you say, or, uh, Mr. Carter, would you say that, um, Councilmember Bird's motion is appropriate and that it should bump other things off the list? Should it be prioritized, um, higher than, than, than where it is and the dollar amount that's on it? I mean, is it, is it a prudent expenditure?
I, I think it's a prudent expenditure. It gets the process started. And, uh, and, uh, let me be clear that, uh, what we're not asking for is to prioritize any specific, spec, other specific, uh, capital projects. Uh, lower those priorities, uh, in order to advance this planning exercise. Uh, and I guess that's the important point is this is a contract to get a third party to analyze, uh, the, uh, the existing condition out there and begin to look at, at preliminary engineering solutions. And that begins a public conversation. So, uh, that's sort of the level of engagement we're talking about here.
So I just wanted to ask, I saw Tyler's thing turn yellow a couple of times. Did you want to speak again, Tyler? Bird?
Oh, uh, thanks Barry for, for seeing that. The, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, from my perspective, I, I'm also not looking at decreasing the priority level of, of any other item. The, my understanding is this has been on, it's, it's for, for a number of years and something that we need to get to. And the, uh, so it's just a matter of finally putting some, some revenue behind it so the process can begin. As far as alternatives from a fire standpoint, um, I don't know what those look like. My understanding and talking to other parties at this point is that there's been conversation about adding additional roads over the, over the mountain there or creating additional lanes of entry into Geneva and that area. Um, but that, that is not a, essentially a non-starter in the conversation. And so the, this seems like the place to begin the conversation is, is looking at what the feasibility of the current infrastructure is prior to adding additional infrastructure into it. Um, as it relates to fire, fire is a portion of this and it, it's a big motivation and driver for a lot of people. Um, however, it's not the only one either. And so it, it seems prudent to me to, to combine them in hopes of, of saving costs, um, in the long run. And so if we're looking at analyzing the road and the structure and, and the traffic at some point down the road, that's been a priority of ours. And we know that increasing the throughput would also assist in evacuation at the time was needed. Um, knock on wood, the, uh, those two things align, then, then why not look at doing them together? Start that process to see what that would entail and, uh, how much additional infrastructure expansion that, what you could get out of that and whether additional options would be necessary or, or whether you could do it in a way that, um, you could get everything, your goals accomplished without actually, uh, creating a, a highway or something. Again, I, I think it just starts the process and bringing the community together to, to have that conversation around it. As far as funding goes, I'm not sure which one of the REITs that this would come out of. I'm assuming that it would come out of the REIT, one of the refunds. Um, please correct me if I'm wrong there. And, but if I'm not looking at the budget documents today, it appears that our REIT funds have more revenue. funds have more revenue coming into them than, than what we had budgeted for. So, um, spreading it out and allocating it over two years instead of one makes that a little bit of a lighter lift as well.
Mr. Donovan.
I was gonna say, I would assume it'd be the road fund, but I might be wrong with that. Um, but if we're going to be going down this, this road, I'm going down this road, the, um, I'm looking at the, the plan here in R nine Slater Northwest, which, you know, is a very important just structured thing. There's some five thousand dollar placeholders in there. Can we talk about similarly why we wouldn't put more money into those? I mean, that, that is a big bottleneck that's going to be increasingly an issue. So I'm just, I'm just looking, this is like, we're, we're talking about things on this list that are rough priority rankings. Um, there's things higher on this list, um, that have the same five thousand dollar placeholders. So, um, why don't we put money in there as well? And is it road fund money that we're talking about?
Uh, so perhaps I could, uh, I could just address that. So yes, indeed, it would be road fund money and, uh, and, you know, real estate excise tax can be used for certain capital improvements for sure, capital facility improvements, although likely not for the planning phase of them. And, and this kind of thing is what the road fund is built for. You know, as it, as it, uh, you, you get to your, to get to your question about, about priorities and, uh, the, the example you used was the Smith and North, uh, excuse me, the Slater Northwest?
The Smith and Northwest is a good example, too. Slater Northwest is an example. This is the same situation where we have dollars placeholder in here and now we're gonna, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do this with, with the Lakeway thing, but we have these higher priorities that we're not putting this money into.
So, so the good news on both of those projects is that we have, uh, we have begun already those studies for, uh, for Smith and Northwest. For example, there's a, a consultant, uh, that we have retained and, uh, I'm sure Jim could talk to how far along that process is and, uh, and we're also engaged with the state, uh, uh, on the Slater and Northwest intersection because that was part of a, a line item appro- appropriation of 21 million at the state for all five of those intersections. Now, whether that actually comes through under the existing economic conditions, I'm not sure. It's all up in the air. But my point here is.
And I'm actually, and I'm, I'm selecting these out because first, the total dollar amounts for the planning are lower. It's 35 for one and 15 for another. And second, we're expecting state funds probably to pull this stuff off, whereas Lakeway's not going to be getting those sort of state dollars, right?
Yeah, and so my purpose isn't, isn't to refute, uh, you know, your, your observations about priorities, but rather to say that, uh, typically when, uh, when, you know, the engineering and traffic guys begin these projects, they gather some of their own information about level of service and all of that sort of thing. And then, uh, and then begin to, uh, sort of, uh, do the, the analysis, retain a, uh, a firm to do like Transpo or somebody to do the, the, uh, initial analysis. And then they begin to look at preliminary engineering. And it's when they get to that preliminary engineering process, uh, that, you know, we, we step out and begin to put meaningful amounts of money in this six year program. Before that, the star for the project hasn't been born. And, uh, and that's not a, uh, there's no prescription for that, uh, for these various kinds of projects. So, you know, if the council wishes to put some money into, uh, into Lakeway Drive, it's not completely out of sorts with how we've dealt with some of these other, uh, major priorities and, and nor in the end, uh, would we ask for it to trump, uh, those priorities that we have already programmed and, and that meaning those intersections that are already on this, on the, on the step. Jim, did I get that approximately right?
Jim Carter, Public Works. Yes, you did, John. Slater Northwest, I'm leaving some money in there so that we can monitor the state's efforts because that is our jurisdictional intersection. And on Smith Northwest, we have an alternatives analysis tendered by the consultant. And we're just idling on that because Rob Nye has got plans for the Northwest Annex that we want to see what he's doing for that before we, uh, start into the final design phase. So good, you know, backdrop for your explanation.
But could we, those, so the 35 for Smith and Northwest and the 15 for Slater Northwest, would we, we would need more for the Lakeway corridor stuff or similar amounts?
Well, we're going to need more for those, those projects are just again, in the initial, uh, planning phase. I, I see where you're going. Is a hundred thousand too much to get started? I suppose if you did 25 in 2021 and 50 in 2022 or, you know.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just, I'm just trying to get a benchmark of like.
Yeah. Go down to the bottom of the, uh, the yearly capital construction and there are some, uh, annual dollars that we put in for things like unanticipated site improvements and stormwater quality, unanticipated non-motorized transportation improvements. Those, those line items are supposed to, are supposed to embrace and embody, uh, two things, either, uh, small dollar, uh, improvements that we can make quickly that, uh, that solve short-term problems, uh, for the community. And second, to help us get some of these, uh, contributions to some of these other projects underway. So, uh, not everything that we start, uh, certainly appears in the six-year transportation program, program, uh, from internally. Uh, however, if the council wants us to start something, then it becomes a, uh, you know, perhaps not a directive, but a request for us to come back with a funding package and a plan that you can then evaluate and, and contemplate. So you're making a pretty direct, uh, request of us and, uh, and that's kind of where we're at right now.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Hey, so I, I don't know if I was really liking this idea at the beginning of it, but then I heard a few things here that gave me concern. And, you know, we haven't declared one, but in my mind, we've got a housing emergency on our hands. And did I hear correctly that, um, we could get to a spot that, um, planning and development might have to shut down development in that area if we fall below a certain level of service on that road?
That is, that is accurate. Now, uh, without appearing to walk backwards here, because I'm quite aware of, uh, of how that might look, uh, the point is that we recognize that as urban use of our transportation, our rural transportation system grows and the level of service, the time that people spend on those, on those roads moving from point A to point B, which is ultimately the measure, um, as, and we measure, we physically do traffic counts and those sorts of things. As, uh, though that congestion begins to approach certain thresholds, then concurrency requires that we, we as a government act. And there are several different ways we can act. We can, uh, we can act, uh, in advance to pursue remedies to that so we can improve the throughput, we can remove the congestion, uh, we can get everybody out of their cars and riding their bikes or taking public transportation. I mean, there's all kinds of solutions. Or we can, uh, we can lower the level of service, which means, uh, you make a decision that people are going to wait on the road for longer. In the absence of those sorts of things, concurrency, um, demands that the county takes some action. And so if we're not going to make improvements and we don't show some other benefit, then, uh, excuse me, some other, uh, control on, uh, that level of service decline, or we don't lower the level of service, then the planning department has to do something.
Did you have a follow up?
The answer to your question is yes.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to let Ben follow up. I did see your, I did see you, uh, raise your hand, sort of.
Yeah, my, um, my, my follow-up question would then be, and I'm scanning our participants here to see if there's anybody that might know, but, um, how much buildable land is out there? Are we in danger of this?
I don't know the answer to, I, I know generally, but it's not going to satisfy the, the needs of this conversation. So, I mean, I would suggest that that's a fair, a totally fair question and perhaps there ought to be some follow-up conversation about, uh, those implications. And, you know, there's plenty of time for that.
Think we lost John.
No, I'm here. I'm just, uh, don't have anything more to say and my light just went out. Did you see that?
Okay, Councilmember Bird.
Thanks Barry. John, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, because I, I may have misread or misinterpreted it when I read it, but, uh, reviewing the city of Bellingham's 2018 assessment of, of Lakeway for their portion, at that time, the document says that they were at the R six level, which is the highest level that they offer unless, except for a handful of streets in which they, they've created an exception to go to R seven. And in 2008, based on that traffic, let count, they made an exception for Lakeway and pushed it to R seven, which from my understanding, they don't have any, they don't allow any higher traffic or congestion on streets than, than that level. In addition to that, in reading it, it sounds like they have stopped development a couple of times for projects because of the impact to congestion on, on Lakeway, um, depending on where the project situated and where that traffic would come into. Is that correct or did I read that correctly from your, from what you know?
Uh, Councilmember Bird, I, I can't, uh, I'm sorry, I can't really respond to the, uh, to the details of your comment. I can say only that, uh, that I know for a fact that, uh, that the city of Bellingham has been concerned about, um, about, uh, the, the capacity of that system, uh, the congestion along that system and, uh, and very concerned about pedestrian and, and bike safety, uh, along that section, right? With people taking left turns across, uh, into the civic, uh, facility there and, uh, and then moving out, uh, up past 711 and up the hill, there's some crosswalks there and the like. Uh, so I know it's been a, uh, a matter of concern for them. And, uh, and the, you know, the commit, commitment we've made to the city of Bellingham is that we would like, uh, to the extent we can, uh, to, to be, to collaborate and be fairly consistent in how we address, uh, our future planning, uh, out beyond the city limits. Uh, so, you know, from that perspective, that also is a, is a bit of, bit of a motivation to, uh, uh, to, to pick this up sooner than, uh, than five or 10 years down the road. Um, I think that's all I can say about that.
Councilmember Donovan.
Okay.
I was just gonna say that, um, the numbers that I, I can't remember was, uh, Mr. Bird or Stone, those talk in terms of the, the amount of buildable, uh, lots out there, uh, that was covered in the, and I can't remember the numbers, but I think we, we covered that in the, um, service water work session and/or the, the Lake Wacom Policy Group thing. Um, so you can go back and look at that maybe. But I, I, I appreciate the idea of, um, you know, making a road work better and increasing bike and pedestrian access. And, and, but when the discussion goes into, we're, we're talking about facilitating increased development in Southern Valley, um, or we're worried about the, the capacity of the road, not facilitating development in Southern Valley when the county and the city of Bellingham have dedicated policy to try to mitigate development and, and, and those areas in the watershed. So now that's where this discussion has just gone and that makes me very hesitant, um, to support something that actually might be, um, a very reasonable thing to do. But, but so that, I just want to get that out because when, when we're talking about the worry here is that we need to increase the capacity of the road so we can have more development in Southern Valley, you're gonna lose me.
Barry, can I respond?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Bird.
Thanks. Uh, Todd, that, that's not the, the driver here. Yeah, they, I think that what I would expect is that it doesn't matter i- if that road is changed or not. Southern Valley, the fact that you can buy lots out there for, you know, $2,000 or $5,000 and have all of your utilities ready to go and all you need to build, to do is build or Geneva, I mean, the lots are going to be more expensive, but in that area you have five or six houses going up right now. So it, the development's going to happen anyway. At the end of the day, it, it will make congestion worse, but as we've seen with other major metro areas like Seattle, I mean, people are going to sit in traffic for two hours in order to get from their home to work, if, if that's what it takes. They, it's not going to inhibit it from a development standpoint unless the county or the city says, hey, it's got to the point where we can't accept more traffic and so we're going to stop development. It does then come to one of those things that we talked about earlier about what areas does the county actually influence, uh, the availability of housing and the price of housing and affordability? And if one of our most affordable areas becomes unbuildable for people, I, I do expect that it would have a major impact. However, i- it's not the driver here. At the end of the day, when I look at that, my numbers will probably be off a little bit, but the, uh, the 2008 report that I looked at said traffic counts were about 9,500 today, 12 years later, they're close to 15,000 or 16,000 is the last one that I saw. Now, is that the same time of day here, same place? I don't know. I can't tell any of that based on, on the reports and that information. Um, I'm kind of curious, but needless to say that the amount of people on the street is growing, is becoming more of an issue. To me, what that translates into is that that's a bigger concern when it comes to the, the safety and security of only having two exits out of that area for, for all of those people. And so how do you address that? At the end of the day, all I'm saying or asking for at this point is that we hire a contractor to look at it and assess it and say, hey, what would this look like and what would this entail so that we can make an educated decision down the road? And I assume that that contractor would do it by looking at all the data as well as what our goals are to achieve and the different types of traffic we want, whether it's bicycle or, or vehicle or, or bus, but also by bringing in the different stakeholders that are associated with it, including fire and, and the school or Bellingham School District and Bellingham and, and the county. So if, if your concern right now is the budget amount, I don't know what this takes. That's why I was asking, the, the 75 to 100, I went with the higher end, assuming that it might be more based on the, the comment that we would be expanding or it would be dependent on the types of traffics that we wanted to assess and knowing quite honestly that you would probably want to have additional things such as walking and bicycling and musing and mass transit included in that. I figured it was safe to choose the higher dollar amount to make sure that it was well-rounded. But if you feel like it should be a smaller dollar amount, I'm happy to make that amendment so that it's, it's a smaller dollar amount as well. Just give me some direction on what you think would work.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Yeah, I think I asked my question about the buildable lands out there. Not so much that it would open it up, but more so is it going to be a problem? If there's only 25 buildable lots out there, then we probably, it's probably not going to get much worse. Now, if there's thousands of homes that could be built out there, then that's another story.
It's closer.
So I guess, okay, I don't know the exact number, which is why I asked. But I, I guess I, I kind of, I feel like, um, oftentimes I've heard people complain that we have places to build, but we just don't have the infrastructure there, whether it be water, sewer or whatever. And I guess I feel like that's kind of our job as county is to, you know, make sure that infrastructure gets to where it needs to be. And, you know, it, it might be prudent to look at this road so it's not the, the reason that we can't have more affordable housing. I mean, I know it's not the sole thing, but it all adds up.
Any other discussion on Mr. Bird's motion to amend?
I restate the motion. Can I restate the motion? I kind of forgot it.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Bird, could you restate your motion?
Yeah, I probably come close to it, but I'm wondering, um, does Kathy ever written down? And if so, would she mind reading it?
I do not.
Okay, we'll come, or this will be a close variation then. To amend the 2020 tip to move R twenty-eight project uh, forward to include $50,000 a budget in 2021 and $50,000 in 2022, with the understanding that the project may begin towards the end of 2021 or even later.
Okay, I think Mr. Ellenboss was the second. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Donovan.
Mr. Bird just gave a statement about a date when the project might begin. I get, I think we're gonna make sure we're well, we, this is a study that might need to be done, but it will probably determine that this project could, I mean, if we're trying, if we're literally talking about increasing the capacity of Lakeway, um, this could be more expensive than the Birch Bay burn, which has already hidden 12 million or something like that. So John, and you can maybe chime in on this, but I, you know, I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're doing here. This is just a study to find out what has to be engineered and what the right of way purchases would be, and then what the construction costs would be. And could you imagine this coming in under $10 million, Mr. Hutchins?
Uh, what I can imagine is that it will, it will come in lots of bits and pieces. And, uh, I mean, typically, uh, unless there's going to be a complete rebuild, uh, similar to what the city did, uh, on Alabama, uh, you you may notice that their their approach on Lakeway has been a little bit more, uh, phased and, uh, you know, taking one piece at a time. So it becomes part of a bigger program, uh, similar to our program to, uh, upgrade a number of, uh, of intersections that are, uh, uh, that are operating at a a lower level of service than we wish, knowing full well that we're gonna have to make those investments in the future. So, um, I I I think perhaps the only thing I would, uh, I would reel back in is the idea that that this, uh, this study will produce projects. What it will produce is a direction, is alternatives that then, uh, will lead to a community discussion about, uh, about the kinds of changes we want to see out there as a community uh, that will have to precede any real hard engineering. Uh, so.
Well, this doesn't, so this wouldn't include the insurance. That's a very diplomatic way of saying.
Yeah, this is a planning exercise.
It's a planning exercise and the scope of work that we're talking about. Um, if it does get to the engineering phase and I guess the construction phase is is, I just want to mention, we're talking millions and millions of dollars if we get that far.
You bet.
Barry. Okay, thank you. Um, for clarity, w- when I said project, I was thinking the the research study project. So, uh, the R twenty-eight as far as the the research study. We can replace the word project in my amendment motion to say the the study or so that the study begins at this period of time, if that if that would be more appropriate or provide more clarity. Actually, you can, can we go ahead and do that? Kathy, are you able to just kind of swap those two words out?
This is Dana. Yes, that's fine. There hasn't been a, uh, vote on the motion yet. So that would be fine for you to restate the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Frazee.
Yes, after listening to everything, I I just don't think this is the time, at least this, this budget period. You know, there's a lot of work went into this, um, the tip. And I think us doing this on a fly doesn't seem prudent. And I, you know, also, it's one of the council members' commutes. And not that that's the reason we're doing this, but, uh, I I just, I don't feel, I don't feel good about this at this time, you know, two years down the road, see where we are, and then put money into this.
John, um, if if this discussion would never have come up, how would you have proceeded on on this issue?
That's a good question. Uh, so as, as so often happens, we, our transportation folks see, uh, see uh, pressure on our transport, on on certain components of our transp- uh, transportation system in advance. And, uh, and we begin to sort of develop some ideas about how we can plan for and address those things. Uh, oftentimes, uh, and sometimes we get to them. For example, the, uh, the, uh, some of the intersections we were referring to earlier. Other times, those problems express themselves before we have, uh, we can make a strong enough argument to dedicate enough resource to actually getting these, uh, these improvements made. Uh, and an example, uh, I mean, I can think of a couple of examples out on, uh, Smith and Goshen. The Department of Transportation needed to make a, uh, a temporary detour over the course of an entire or most of it summer while they did a great big culvert and bridge project out on the Mount Baker Highway. The result of that was making some changes to the Smith and Goshen, uh, intersection. Uh, and in digging into that, realized that the the only way we could make that work for the traffic was one solution. And and as we, uh, and and that has driven a a a conversation about how to resolve that issue for the long term. So there are all kinds of drivers behind it. Uh, I would guess in this particular instance, uh, this would stay on here for quite a while before it got any, uh, uh, got any momentum, uh, waiting for, waiting for some, uh, an advocate, a champion of, uh, of this particular project. Obviously, we cared enough about it to get it on here in the first place and and recognize that it that it needed, it needs to be addressed.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Yeah, so w- we we had reference to the Birch Bay burn project, which made me wonder how long, how long was it that the Birch Bay burn project was just a wee little seedling in someone's mind until it now? And I guess if if we don't start thinking about projects like this and getting them moving, maybe they never get done. Does, John, you could probably answer how long from conception to getting it done on the burn project?
I sure can. So, I mean, the the initial concept was born in the 1970s. And, uh, and it jumped onto our six-year program. Uh, I think it went on and off. It somehow made it into the, uh, the county's comp plan, of all things. Ended up on our six-year, uh, program in 2001, and here we are building it in 2020. Um, so you can see how long it takes to develop these, uh, these larger, uh, you know, these big solutions.
Mr. Bird.
Thanks. Um, I want to address Carol's statement about the commute and the, uh, that it benefits me. You, Carol, the, uh, the, I I'm really trying to walk a line here because the the community wants this, but I I struggled bringing it forward because I knew that that was gonna come up. And so I didn't want that to happen and and become the focus of this conversation. They, because it's not the point of of this by any means. What made me finally make the decision that, yeah, I needed to do this was actually looking at my demographics of my my district. And what I mean by that is, we have roughly 44,000 people in each to the five districts. Between Geneva and Southern Valley alone, that puts that section of my district at almost 11,000 people, not counting any of the areas that wouldn't be included in that. So you're talking about 25% of the people that I represent in my district live there. Because I live there with them, should that mean that everything that they need to happen can't happen through me because there would be a perceived conflict that it might increase a commute that I that I'm a part of once a month, the, uh, for myself? I don't think that's fair. And so at the end of the day, you know, if that's what is gonna get used against me so that I look bad in bringing this forward, or I look selfish in bringing it forward, I'm willing to accept that to help that 25% of the people that live there that need an advocate for the project. But it's not the reason that that I'm bringing the conversation forward. So, eh, for the record.
Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah, I I I don't like the district plan that we went to, but I appreciate people advocating for their districts. So I'm not worried about that at all, Mr. Bird. Um, the, it it is gonna be odd as we go forward because we will look at these plans differently when we have have districts, but I I think that's that's completely fair and and normal. Um, I just want to make sure. So the the motion, so we're talking about R twenty-eight. Or is it to do a study for the kind of bike and ped improvements that the city's been doing in 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 their jurisdiction? Um, and slash or is it, we're talking about a study to really redo the level of service um, on that road? And I guess that's, I'd, I don't know if that's a question for the person making the motion or for Mr. Hutchins, but it, but those seem like different things, like, uh, because I can see how it makes sense to plan for the kind of bike and pedestrian improvements and crosswalks. And and John mentioned that crosswalk thing. Those were my first meetings. I was, I was pulling one of the things off through that crosswalk on Lakeway. Um, but that's what, you know, are we talking, what exactly is the scope of what we're 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 talking about in this motion here? Love, you know, towards a particular level of service? And the bike ped stuff or just kind of doing what the city's been doing? Because I I don't know if the city's really been doing level of service stuff is, I mean, they're improving, um, pedestrian and 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 bike lanes and stuff, but that they're not widening the road and increasing capacity. So is it one or both?
Todd, yeah, I'll reply. John could come in if I'm wrong, or if I need to sit here, if it would be something different. But, um, I honestly, I don't know that the road has to be widened either. And but I'm I'm not the the road guy, the traffic guy. I told John I was out there trying to problem solve this on my, in my own bike with my tape measure, measuring all the lanes and the sidewalks and everything the other day, um, to figure it out. It, to me, it feels like we have enough roadway that already exists with the extra wide lanes and the buffers that that you could add a turn lane in or a second lane, or it's somehow adjust within the footprint that's already there. But I don't know all the rules about how wide the lanes have to be or anything else. I'm not advocating for expanding the street per se. What I would like to do is start the discussion about what's needed in a holistic way that includes all forms of traffic. That's it at this point. Does that answer the question for, or that you're asking one and and two?
Yeah, I guess, like, are we talking about expanding the footprint? Because we're we're talking about planning for or funding a planning study. So is it to talk about right of way acquisition and increase the footprint of the road? Which I think is, that's a big deal. Or are we talking about the kind of, yeah, using the existing capacity of what's there that we have right of ways to for turn lanes and crosswalks and bike ped stuff? And I think, I think those are very different things.
Yeah, I I would hope that they would look at the first before they look at the second, uh, as far as how to use the existing footprint before they they look at expanding it. But you, uh, from my perspective, if they look at all the data and the research, it's about figuring out what's needed based on all the forms of traffic and what's currently happening and what they think's gonna happen. And so if they came back and said, hey, we needed to expand, well, then that would be a different conversation. My hope is that doesn't happen either, especially the way John described it. It sounds like it would be a very unpleasant, long process. But, um, at the same time, I I don't want to say, hey, just look at this section and then have them, or have us spend the money and have them come back with nothing. So maybe we could ask that it be prioritized and they could assess whether or not the current footprint wa- could be better utilized and then if not, move on to or look at what it would take to to make, to meet the goals necessary. My understanding though is that they work, and John, please say if I'm I'm saying anything incorrect here. But my understanding is when they do this, they they look at what our goals are first and then work within those. So, um, you you know, if we wanted to say we would expect X amount of of foot traffic and X amount of bicycle traffic or, um, the, uh, fan share or, or, you know, community rides, transportation, uh, that they would take all of that into account and work within that kind of confines. So this is, again, about starting the conversation. And then I I think my understanding, the process so far, is that this would get it started at sometime late 2021, early 2022. And then John and his team would come back and say, okay, here's the RFP and and the project that we're gonna go out and forbid on and what it would entail. And so we would get a look at better defining that when that next step happens. But I could be wrong about that.
And John, before you chime in, we're, if we are talking about R twenty, we're talking about just this 1.4 miles of road. Because I was, I was thinking the whole way to Southern Valley. But the actual narrative for the project is talking about 1.5, four miles of road on Lakeway Drive. So is that the scope of what we're talking about here in Mr. Bird's motion? And we just lost John.
My wife called. Um, yeah, so I think, I think I can help out here. Um, because, I mean, at this juncture, uh, we haven't even scoped this any further than, uh, than the initial, uh, the the vision of the first people that put this on, uh, some, I don't know, five or six years ago now. Uh, so what I would ask is that, uh, you know, if we want to put some, put a modest amount of money in 2021 so that we can direct some of our engineering and engineering resources and begin to develop a scope uh, that we could then bring back to the council to have a conversation about what that appropriate scope is. And I I can tell you from my experience, if we, uh, if we try and short shrift, uh, a, an interest group in our community, we're gonna hear about it. And it will become a huge problem for, uh, for us as an an organization to get, uh, get anywhere close to yes. So, uh, my expectation is that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to bring everybody, you know, all potential users uh, into this conversation at some point. But before we even get there, we've got to really understand what the condition is out there today. And that's really where we start this whole, uh, exercise, is understanding the condition today, where where the hangups are in, uh, in delivering these services. And, uh, and that's all in, uh, necessary for us to get to a scope. So I think I would, uh, beg your indulgence for us to be able to go back, get that done by the end of 2021 so that, uh, by the time we get to our next, uh, mid biennium budget, we can have a conversation about what the real cost, on the ground cost of getting this planning exercise accomplished will be. Uh, meanwhile, I think what I would like to commit to the council is that we, uh, we, the administration won't advance this conversation any further without your, uh, understanding and consent of what that, uh, what that appropriate scope is.
I just, I'm, yeah, I feel like I deflected because of the conversation, I kind of went to Lakeway to Southern Valley. But I I I just looked at the document again, but what what R twenty-eight really is about is 1.4 miles.
R twenty-eight was originally talking about from the city limits, I think, up to, uh, Oriental or just over the top or something like that.
So if that, if that's the motion, I just want, because I I think I might be responsible for taking the conversation away that we're talking about the whole road and we're talking about 1.4 miles of the road.
Yeah, what what why don't, why don't we come back and have a a committee conversation in, you know, in in the new year about what the appropriate scope, what the what the goals of this exercise are? And, uh, And uh, with the understanding that, uh, we've, we will have budgeted some money, rec- we will have recognized that there are uh, there are issues associated with future uh, the, the, of the transportation system, particularly in that section from the city limits going out to Geneva, but uh, but potentially even further. And we can have, we can narrow the scope of this, uh, appropriately going forward so that we can uh, we can take one step, one real good step towards, uh, getting some alternatives out there for the community to, to contemplate. And at that point, we'll be able to understand what the implications of not acting are. I think, I think that's a
John, am I?
To, uh, to get some support for moving this forward in, in a thoughtful way.
John, I mean, eh, I, I'm supportive of that personally, uh, so that I understand what you're suggesting, would that would I still have the motion so that it included revenue or, or something? Or a budget for you to use in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, eh, but we would be defining the scope before any money was spent in twenty twenty-one? So it would be there or would this be where we don't make the motion? Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Councilmember Frazee, I saw your hand.
Yes, I, my, now my internet is, uh, acting up and I missed some of that, but I, I now I'm understanding that, uh, Mr. Hutchings, um, is recommending we move this forward. I think that's what I'm hearing for the one point four miles. The study of that.
Eh, I would like to clarify that, 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 that scope, we all need to decide what that scope is before we start spending any money. And when I say we all, that means the council has to be comfortable and have, have debated this to, to the point that we understand what what our intentions are, what our goals are. And we can't really have a, a competent conversation about that until we have some more information on the table. And uh, we'd like to get that before we get the problem solving part.
Can I? This is Tyler. Um. You know, traffic congestion, eh, as far as I'm aware, is only, eh, I've never seen any traffic congestion past Geneva. Um, eh, the Southern Valley part, Todd, eh, that didn't actually come from you. It came from something mentioned earlier, um, by, I'm sorry, forgetting name, um, from planning, um, talking about the road and possibly the budget dollar amount to look at it to Southern Valley. The reason eh, um, to also look at it to Southern Valley isn't because there's, there's traffic or congestion from Geneva to Southern Valley, but it goes back to the original point of if you had to evacuate eight thousand, almost nine thousand people out of Southern Valley, would that work? Eh, what I hear John saying is that if we put it on there, then these are all the types of conversations that we can have in early twenty or twenty-one to give direction on exactly what the project should look like. So is it just the one point four miles and just the congestion? Or should it be expanded to Southern Valley to also include? You know, emergency response eh, capabilities? Or i- is it some portion in between? And, and so those are the things that we could decide in twenty twenty-one, early, before we spend money, so that we're all on the same page with, with what the project would look like.
Yes, I'm with you. I, I suspect that we're all going to have our eyes opened when we start talking about scope.
So what's the status of our motion here?
Hi, this is Dana. Um, Tyler, can you please restate your motion? I want to make sure we have it clear.
Okay, this one's going to be even more different than the last one, maybe. No, um. The, eh, to amend the twenty twenty, eh, traffic improvement plan to change our item, R twenty-eight to begin in twenty twenty-one with a fifty thousand dollar budget and an additional twenty twenty, or fifty thousand in twenty twenty-two? Wait, this, okay, I, I'm sorry, I scratched that and started over. Uh, to amend the twenty twenty traffic improvement plan, eh, item R twenty-eight to begin twenty twenty-one or later with a fifty thousand dollar budget allocation in twenty twenty-one and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-two.
Just to make things interesting, we lost our chair and you're the vice chair, Mr. Bird.
Oh man, no.
You don't have video.
That's not going to be good for any of us. Yeah.
Internet day.
How's Tyler gonna see?
It is a bad internet. Eh, you, they, no worse. I, I got fifteen percent battery left on my phone here, so this is, this is a great day here. Um.
I can't believe I have the most evil internet.
You just jinxed it again, man.
It ain't.
Do we even have a quorum anymore?
Yeah, we, we, we appear to, um, at least in terms of the screens. Kathy's on twice.
It only gets one vote.
I'm still here. I'm looking.
It's so, Tyler, it's okay for you to make a motion and also call for the vote.
Okay, eh, eh, is there, actually, I can't see, or if people have their hands raised or anything else, um. Todd or Rudd, i- if one of you are on with video, would you like to, to take over as?
Yeah, does anybody have more, um, comments on, oh, Rudd's coming in here too. Um, I'll defer to Rudd since he was a previous council chair, not only a previous vice chair.
Okay.
I believe Ben Ellenboss originally seconded the, the motion to amend.
The one we're trying to call.
That's correct.
Yeah, so we're trying, so we have a motion on the floor, is that correct, Ms. Holker?
Yes, there is a motion to amend. It was seconded by Ellenboss. Would you like me to call the roll?
Yes, please.
Todd Donovan?
So we're talking about twenty twenty-one. Um, road fund, planning for R twenty-eight, that's as I understand the motion, I will vote yes on that.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
No.
Barry Buchanan? Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes five.
That was just to, um, amend, sorry, go ahead.
Amendment passes five to one with Brown opposed and Buchanan absent. Now, now we're to the main motion and Ms. Holker, if you could call the roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan is away.
Yeah, that passes six to zero with Buchanan absent. Um. Starting up is, um, AB twenty twenty dash three six six, request authorization with the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watcom County and the City of Blaine for financial year twenty twenty burn justice assistance grant program in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Do we have a staff report? Seeing no staff report, uh, do we have anybody signed up? Uh, with that, I'm going to open the public session. And do we have anybody signed up for that?
Councilmember Brown, um, I'll just announce quickly, if anyone would like to speak on this topic, to please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon on your screen or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Uh, with that, I will close the, the open public session. And what's the role of the council?
Move for approval?
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved for approval. It's been seconded. Mr. Buchanan is back. We, I'll finish this, Mr. Buchanan, I'll hand it back to you.
Uh, what are we, what are we, uh, going to vote on? Rudd?
AB, AB twenty twenty-three six six.
And what was the disposition of the item before it?
Passed five, s- sorry, six zero with you absent.
I would have voted yes, so in case anybody cares. So. So, okay, so.
Thanks, Barry. Thank you, everyone, actually. I appreciate it.
Uh, councilmember Donovan?
So I, I, I just am wondering, and I'm, I don't know if there's anyone here, we asked for a staff report, but I don't know what the, um, this Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant is, um, and I should have asked earlier. I don't want to put somebody from the sheriff's office on this, on the spot, but if anybody knows, I just, I'm just curious.
Councilmember Ellenboss? I was going to ask the same question. Thanks, Todd.
And I should have sent an email, um, to the responsible party whose email address is on there, but I, I did get to that, but, um, and I, I I didn't do my research.
Is the executive still here? I don't see him. Mr. Schroder, do you know anything about this?
You know, Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, um, I know that over the years, the sheriff's office has moved forward with these, uh, JAG grants, is what they refer to them, which is a justice assistance grant. Uh, it's a pretty common federal, uh, grant award, uh, the Edward Byrne Memorial. And it can be utilized for a number of different law enforcement purposes, uh, including drug treatment enforcement, planning evaluation, technology improvements, crime justice and witness initiatives, mental health programs. Uh, so it's kind of all across the board as it relates to, to policing uh, functions and, uh, is just a, a pretty standard federal grant that we get in.
Thanks, Tyler. Does that answer your questions, uh, Mr. Ellenboss?
That's helpful. Thanks, yeah.
Uh, see, we're, 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 we have a motion and a second at this point, right? I, that's where I kind of came in. I think you were making the motion, Mr. Brown?
Uh, I didn't make the motion, but you're right. We were ready for a vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Frazee made a motion and Tyler Bird, um, seconded.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other further discussion on this? Okay, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes, I thought we lost Tyler, yes.
That passed, uh, seven zero. Okay, uh, next up is our open session. Uh, since we are holding our meetings virtually, we will have, we will play our little video again that explains how folks can, uh, ask to be, uh, to testify. So Kathy, if you would roll that, please? Okay, Kathy, is there anyone raising their hand for the open session? We will open the open session.
Yes, we have four hands raised. Um, the first speaker will be, uh, Miguel Perry, followed by Lane McElvoy, Tim Johnson, Trevor Smith, and Valerie Rep. Uh, Miguel, go ahead.
Thank you. It's been a long evening and so I'm not going to take a lot of time. Uh, good evening, council. I'm Miguel Perry, lead representative with the Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak to you. As you know, the carpenters do not support the original Cherry Point amendments that you submitted for review to the planning commission. However, after a year-long process, the planning commission has returned some thoughtful recommendations to the council. While the recommendations are not ideal, they are acceptable. The commission did its job and brought all parties together and during ten work sessions arrived at compromises that both sides worked on. I urge you to accept the planning commission recommendations. We have debated the Cherry Point amendments long, eh, long enough. All stakeholders have worked with the planning commission on the recommendations. I urge the council to accept those recommendations so we can move on to issues related to rebuilding our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel.
Our next speaker is Lane McElvoy. Lane, if you could go ahead. Lane McElvoy? If you could go ahead. Unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, my name is Lane McElvoy. I am the area manager for J H Kelly. We're a general contractor in Watcom County. And I'd just like to kind of second what Miguel said. Uh, planning commission finished, uh, the review of the Cherry Point amendments. And with some meat in the middle, uh, between, um, basically industry leaders and the NGOs, we came up with a fairly agreeable uh, document that it sounds to me like the planning commission recommended be approved by the county council. So with a lot of work sessions, ten work sessions, I believe it was, uh, Miguel mentioned. Over the course of the year, we've actually met in the middle, which doesn't seem to happen very often in politics anymore. I think that's pretty cool. I'd love to celebrate it and encourage it by taking the recommendations and moving forward with it. I am hearing that there is some talk about funding additional law studies and going back and revising those recommendations again. I'm just concerned that's going to put us in a loop that's just going to make this thing continue to go on and drag on and on and on. All the while, we're going to just see things happen like what has happened over the past year where Intalco has closed, losing seven hundred direct jobs. Um, heard about another manufacturer in the area losing jobs, not necessarily in the Cherry Point area, but the scary part is, is with the way the economy is right now and, um, I, I guess the situation we're in, the last thing we really want to do is see more jobs going away and continuing to allow this po- this moratorium and, and policy change to dwindle along and not get resolved is, is going to scare business owners. So, um, just very encouraged by what I saw out of, uh, basically the non-governmental organizations, industry and the planning commission, and I just ask that the county council move forward with those recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks, Lane.
Our next speaker is Tim Johnson, followed by Trevor Smith and Valerie Rep Power. And then we'll have Lance Callaway and Barney Smith. So our next speaker is Tim Johnson. Go ahead, Tim.
Well, good evening, council. Uh, my name is Tim Johnson. I live in Watcom County and I'm the Public and Government Affairs Director at the Philip sixty-six Ferndale Refinery. I would like to speak to the proposed Cherry Point Code amendments as discussed in your council committee of the whole meeting, uh, this afternoon. I'll offer a comment on the current process in a moment, but I first wanted to speak to the work that's just finished up this summer and the planning commission recommendations that were returned to you. Um, many have invested a lot of time, energy and resources in the planning commission process that took over, took place over the past year. It was a valuable effort from our perspective. Much progress was made. Uh, Philip sixty-six asked the council to recognize the value of this progress and give further consideration to the commission's recommendations. These recommendations were based upon input from a wide range of stakeholders, environmental organizations, industrial representatives, labor and others, as well as regulatory expertise such as a Northwest Clean Air Agency. And they were developed with much thought and informed deliberation. We hope this year's worth of collaborative work will not be lost. Over the past week or so, Philip sixty-six has engaged with our counterparts in industry, labor and environmental organizations in multiple meetings. Uh, discussions so far have been focused on addressing the initial concerns identified in the council's, uh, September fifteenth meeting. And we appreciate the efforts of Eddie Urie from Resources to organize these meetings. Philip sixty-six will continue to be part of the discussions within that forum. And we also look forward to the opportunity for additional engagement through council meetings or work sessions with other stakeholders in the future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Trevor Smith. Go ahead, Trevor.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name's Trevor Smith.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name's Trevor Smith. Um, I'm the, I live in Bellingham and I'm the political director for Labor's Local two ninety-two. Um, as you guys are probably aware, I'm here to talk about the, the Cherry Point Comp Plan Amendments. Um, I've been heavily involved in this process. Um, I've been, uh, attending the, the joint meetings, went through the planning commission process. Um, it was a long and sometimes, uh, unproductive and often tedious process. Um, but there was a lot of good work that was done. There was a lot of agreement on issues and disagreement on others. Um, and in the last year, uh, it's been the most productive in my experience because of the work done by the planning commission in its review. A significant part of that was a constructive way the commission strongly encouraged stakeholders with opposing views to work together on the Cherry Point Amendment fixes. Many of these compromises were difficult, but with the encouragement and support of the commission, real progress was made. Um, now that the commission has the, the recommendations, I'm frustrated by how the council seems to be pushing back on the hard-fought compromises that were crafted during the commission process. Um, I know you guys have a lot of other things to focus on. The planning commission finished this work and it's not perfect and it probably won't ever be, but compromises were found. Industry, uh, labor, environment, everybody came together, uh, worked on this language and created something that everybody is, is willing to work with. And then, uh, at your guys' last meeting, it was discussed that the compromise agreement didn't have sufficient input from the, from the NGOs. The ones that were in the room, uh, were the, I mean, I don't think anybody was held out of it. Um, I was really hoping that you guys would respect this process and that you would accept the work that was done and the effort that went into this, because this has been, this has been a long process and, and it's continuing. And we look forward to actually getting it completed and actually having, having you guys, uh, work through it and, and approve it. And then listening to the meeting, uh, the council whole earlier today, um, one thing I do want to point out is that when it comes to recognized NGOs or affected parties, um, labor is never included in your guys' discussions. Um, and that really bugs us. Uh, we keep asking to be recognized as NGOs and we keep asking to be recognized that the people who work in these plants and the people who live in this county need to have a voice in this process. And we've been going to these meetings, so we've had representatives. And if you guys are going to move forward with more of this, we, we ask that labor be involved in it. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Trevor. Is there anyone else, uh, wishing to speak, Kathy?
Sorry, I didn't unmute myself. Um, our next speaker is Valerie Rep Power, followed by Lance Callaway, Barney Smith, Marcus D, and Wendy Harris. So, uh, let's see, go. Hmm, it looks like I need to promote Valerie. She's using a older version, just a second.
Um, hello?
Hello, we're not using video, but you're welcome to go ahead with your, um, audio.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, so I guess I'll start now. Um, hello, my name is Valerie Roop. I am a constituent from Lummy Island and I'm speaking out of concern for several related housing issues. The state eviction moratorium is set to expire on October fifteenth, and you're about to have an already dangerous situation become even more deadly. Uh, and this has to be addressed. Winter is coming and hundreds of people will need to find safe, warm shelter. Um, for people without housing, social distancing is impossible. And this poses health risks to our entire community. Epidemiology shows that we are all connected and rely on each other. Um, you need to prioritize housing for every person in the county as soon as possible. My friend Marcus D., who will be speaking in a bit, um, uh, he has put forward several options, um, for you all to consider. The CARES Act has designated money for COVID relief and that money must be sent, uh, protecting and housing our most vulnerable population. Until everyone has a safe place to call home, you need to stop sweeps of homeless encampments. Um, yesterday, the Bellingham City Council voted unanimously to expand a no-sitting or laying ordinance, particularly around base camp. This rule is extremely ableist and discriminatory. When I was pregnant in Portland, um, with my youngest, I needed help from organizations that helped the poor and the homeless. And with my toddler in tow, I waddled about a mile to a women's organization for diapers and other places for food. And at the end of the month, it was life-saving. Uh, the line was really long and had sitting been illegal. I may have had any number of issues endangering me and my unborn baby. Thank goodness that Portland did not ban sitting on sidewalks. I was visibly pregnant at the time, but many other people who do uh, have disabilities and illnesses that are not visible but still need to sit, how can sitting be illegal? This rule is meant to give police the ability to have an excuse to harass the poor and homeless during during the last meeting, you made a point to say that you will hold police accountable. If this is true, don't give them ways to discriminate against people. Uh, use your inter-local agreements to urge the city of Bellingham to rethink these policies and encourage input from people who have experienced homelessness. Homeless advocates and other members of the community will be impacted by these ridiculous policies. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Lance Callaway. Lance, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name's Lance Callaway. I'm the Northern District Manager for Associated General Contractors of Washington, and I've been a resident of Waukesha County since nineteen ninety-one. I'd like to comment on the great work done by the Waukesha County Planning Commission on the Cherry Point Industrial Comprehensive Plan Amendments Recommendations. AGC had been concerned with the council's expanded use of conditional use permits throughout the county, and this has been why we've closely followed the progress of the Cherry Point Amendments. The planning commission has finished its review of the amendments, and now the future of those amendments and Waukesha County are back in your hands. The planning commission did an excellent job in facilitating a process which brought together all stakeholders who effectively worked with the planning commission to develop recommendations which all stakeholders can live with. I'd like to ask the council to stop tinkering with and accept the planning commission's recommendations. The commissions, the commission encouraged opposing groups to work together and to agree on contentious issues within your proposed Cherry Point Amendments. The frustration the council is creating now by revisiting the commission recommendations is counterproductive and will result in more division within our community. These are difficult issues. And I ask you to please accept the well-thought-out recommendations of the planning commission. Waukesha County needs your leadership now more than ever. The planning commission recommendations are the most balanced compromise that all parties are likely to achieve. I ask the council to accept and include the planning commission's recommendation in the final version that's put forth to the council for a vote. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I hope you have a great evening.
Our next speaker is Barney Smith. And followed by Marcus D. and Wendy Harris. Go ahead, Barney Smith.
Hey, good evening. Uh, my name is, uh, Barney Smith, and I am a business rep of IBW Local one nine one. That's International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Um, I represent approximately two thousand, uh, electricians. And, uh, at any given time, there could be, you know, two to three hundred guys working there just on Cherry Point. The planning commission has held about ten work sessions. Uh, it's been a very long, thought-out process and something that actually has made me very proud because, uh, of our current situation we're in. Two sides got together and they came up with a, with a plan, a compromise, and, uh, it's, it was transparent. Uh, it was collaborative. Um, you know, no side is really winning or losing. It's, it's, it's what, it's what, it's who we are, and it's a model that I think we can show the rest of the nation that this is how things should, should work. It was a lot of hard work and, uh, I really hope that, that you, uh, you take the, the recommendation. It's been a long time. Uh, a project has been held up that's, you know, a billion dollars. Earlier in this meeting, you guys talked about, uh, having to have grants and, and the tax basis is, is not where it should be. Well, you had a prime opportunity to have a billion-dollar project in your backyard. And, you know, in order for, for, for the green to come, we gotta have a transition, and this is like a transition project. It's just something that I think this county needs, and I really hope you take this into consideration and take the planning commission's recommendation about Cherry Point. Thank you and have a great evening.
The next speaker is Marcus D., followed by Wendy Harris and Melissa Gragg. Marcus, go ahead and state your full name for the record, please.
Hello, this is Marcus D. Stidham. You hear me okay? I think you do.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, so anyway, um, yeah, this is Marcus D. I am, uh, I'm on the Homeless Strategies Work Group as the homeless advocate there, and so that is the lane that I stay in a lot. So that's why you haven't heard much from me, but I've been very busy this summer, uh, with, uh, the COB and with the BPD in trying to, uh, getting their sweeps policy together, uh, with them. Uh, we went for most of the summer under the impression there was a policy and there never was one, and so we were misinformed repeatedly by the chief of police, uh, to all civic leaders and the mayor about that, but that's neither here nor there. Where we are is that we do indeed, uh, desperately need emergency sheltering. Um, emergency sheltering has been proffered in the, in the, uh, i- in the Homeless Strategies Work Group. I hope you will all please, uh, engage that and, and watch us there. Uh, this is an emergency. We're in a COVID emergency. I can't say emergency enough apparently because everybody's like asking for a permitting process or this or that to get anything done. We've got millions of dollars on the, on the, on the table right now. I'm not sure how much interlocally, but I do know that, uh, you all are working together now on this COVID emergency, and I'm hoping you can help the now-limping COB get over this hurdle. Um, this is, this is really dire. Uh, they've put all of their eggs in, in the basket of base camp and are using one-bed availability for a reason why they can bounce hundreds of people around in our town. You know, that's not going to work, and it's certainly against CDC recommendations, against the health department's recommendations our local. And, and, and please also reach out to the health department and make sure that not only we have emergency sheltering for this winter and winter sheltering, but also a communication network must be established because last year was terrible. And so many people didn't even know that there were shelters available. I don't know about you, I'm tired about, I'm tired of seeing our citizens dying. I'm, I'm tired of watching our citizens go out in the streets until many hours of the morning, uh, in, in the cold, uh, in the dark to help people and risking their own lives, elders, pensioners. Please, please pay attention to this, people. And, and, uh, do regard the Homeless Strategies Work Group where we've got so much more work to do, but we need your help and the COB needs your guidance. Please hear this plea. And also, don't go forward on Cherry Point. Do not expand that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wendy Harris, followed by Melissa Gragg. Wendy, go ahead. Wendy, can you unmute yourself? Wendy, go ahead. We'll go ahead with Melissa Gragg. Um, Melissa Gragg, go ahead, please.
Hello.
Hello, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, so, yeah, um, I'm here to, you know, kind of echo Marcus and, um, I, I would love to be spending my three minutes discussing how, uh, we should not be having, um, misdemeanor charges in court right now during a pandemic and things like, you know, sheriff's overreach and abuse. Um, but we're in a sheltering emergency right now and the city guys won't do their jobs. Um, and so, yeah, like Marcus said, we're in the middle of it. You guys can actually like help us to get our, put our foot in these guys. Like, this is labor. They're slowing up production. We need to get this stuff done so that we can house these people, so that we can track them, monitor them, get them the right services, help these people. And right now, we're in a golden opportunity where it is an actual emergency, and so you guys can kind of step in and help us maybe, you know, explain to these guys how important this is so that I could go back to, you know, hopefully talking about how horrific our sheriff's office is and how they let pedos go free and arrest domestic violence victims instead. Because I'd much rather like to be talking about that. That's really important. Um, but we need to get the, the people, uh, into shelters because, um, there's a whole lot of people getting ready to lose their houses and, uh, their rentals and everything because of the pandemic. And we had, we haven't even housed the ones that are already out there. It's embarrassing at this point, um, the lack of care in this town. As a houseless DV victim with, you know, mentally, uh, traumatized children, I can't get any services at all. Anywhere. I can't get any help from anyone. There's no money in it. Nobody cares. It's ridiculous. By all intents and purposes, I should be out there on the street, messed out of my gourd, dead. It's only by the good graces of my friends that I'm here to be able to bitch about this and tell you that half those people out there are me. So please, please help us. We're begging. We're lowering ourselves. We're coming to the county to help us. Come on, man. We need to do this. It's going to kill more people. Thanks, guys.
I'll go back to our last speaker, Wendy Harris.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Um, yeah.
Record and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, sorry, I tried, I tried to speak earlier on some of the hearings and I, um, just couldn't get this to work. Um, but something that triggered, um, a reaction in me was the discussion about, um, the tip and fires and whether or not that was really about growth. And what I thought was interesting is there's, um, something called the annuation of, um, growth where the more roads you have, the more people come out and use them, so it doesn't really take care of traffic, just creates greater congestion. And so if we're really concerned about, um, fire, and I really am, um, there are other things we should be looking at besides roads that have to do with land use. And most of all, it's, um, logging the forests. Um, you know, that has been sold to all of us as the most important thing. It is the worst thing. And we're not being told that there's controversy over that. We live in the Pacific Northwest, which has a very unique forest. We, we have a temperate rainforest. And the way it works is it's, it's built to be dense, and all of that density keeps it moist. And that moisture is what keeps our forests a lot safer than other forests, um, with regards to fire. Once you get in there and you start thinning out those forests, um, you're going to let in light and you're going to dry out the forest, and then we're in trouble. So there's things we should be thinking about regarding land use and zoning, um, further away from forests. Where we do need to really be, um, trimming and cutting, um, away growth is around people's homes. And we should have, um, different building standards for homes that are near forests where they have, um, you know, metal roofs and there's other things you can do. Most of the fires that spread are, it's actually not the fire. It's when the wind blows and, um, the embers get caught in parts of the house that are, are further down the street, and that's what keeps those fires going. And there's things you can do for that. Um, but the real problem here is we're just going on with this insane notion that we can keep growing. We're already out of water. Um, we're running out of land. Uh, we're, we're killing off our wildlife and our clean air. And there's a disconnect when I come into the council and listen to you guys and I go home because the rest of the world is dealing with climate change. And the way they deal with it, um, most of the countries is by planting trees. Nothing's more important, um, to, um, basically a, a lot of ecosystem functions than those trees. A, a tree watershed is the gold standard of health. And we need to stop filling in our wetlands. We need to, um, if we're going to hire a consultant, let's hire a consultant to figure out where the habitat corridors are and how we connect them. And it would be really nice if we actually updated, um, our wildlife inventory. And knew what kind of we're there. So I hope that, um, we can explore these kinds of issues, um, in more detail in the future. Thank you.
We have one last speaker, uh, listed as HK. HK, go ahead. Please stay here.
Hello.
For the record.
Hello.
Yes, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your full name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm on a mobile gadget. I can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kathy. You can start my time now. Um, hi, this is Heather Cattodin, resident of Watcom County, Skalaica Mountain and Lake Watcom watershed. First of all, I want to share my appreciation for the time and effort you on council share with our community as county counselors. I see how big your job is to care for our county community. I also watch the Bellingham City Council Committee and Meetings and listen to all the county homeless strategy work group. Carol Frazee, we look forward to your return to the work group. The town of Bellingham and all the citizens within that area are part of the county. Each time I go to town, I see many of our citizens struggling to survive. Bellingham City Council does some good work. However, it's obvious now in late September, after a smoke week and high winds, that the city staff has been challenged with creating or implementing any public winter shelter plans. Our one group shelter base camp does care for many of our county citizens. However, their shelter size is limited and during severe weather, there will not be enough mats for hundreds of citizens who still currently live in their vehicles or their tents or in cardboard mats. I know this by volunteering outside on winter nights, outreach to citizens who are disoriented and needing warmth and food. People that are part of our homeless family. Creating additional tiny home villages like Unity Village is a successful model. There's also a need for safe parking sites and a need for public land for families and individuals to experience safety in their tent shelters and have access to hygienic infrastructure as basic as a porta potty, hand washing stations and drinking water. I believe we need to encourage each other and to encourage our individual faith groups and encourage all our council members to let go of our fears and to increase our courage by creating multiple winter shelters for our most vulnerable Watcom County citizens, our family. Let us not give up on each other. Let us not ever give up on any person who is outside without shelter, without family to bring them home. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Councilmember Buchanan, there are no other attendees with raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all who testified today. Uh, we really appreciate you being here. Um, we will move, we'll close the open public session and we will move to, uh, council member Bird and the consent agenda and the rest of finance.
Did we lose Tyler again?
Looks like he dropped off the internet waterfall. Yep.
How's the young guy not have internet?
I don't know. Well, let's see. I'm going to go out of order just so we can keep moving. I'm going to.
Hey, Barry?
Yes.
Uh, the host stopped my video and so I can't restart it.
Think that was an accident?
There he is.
My apologies. I turned off the videos for the public comment period.
Roger. My, um, my internet is still functioning well. What?
I know you're the only one that hasn't lost it today, I think.
Well, I've lost it plenty of times before.
Well, I guess let's go to, uh, uh, the council, public works and health committee. Carol, uh, let's take your committee first.
Okay, um. So you just read the resolutions, correct?
Just, uh, just read the, uh,
Okay.
The title.
Thank you. Um, this is from the council, um, public works and health committee. And we had AB two zero two zero four one five, a resolution approving the Birch Bay Water and Sewer District Comprehensive Water System Plan Update. And that's on pages three hundred and forty-four to three sixty-seven. And I believe that was, what, three to passing committee, three to zero? And what's the, and I move, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion discussion.
We don't need a second when it comes out of committee, right?
No, no, only when it comes from the floor on a, uh, committee, the whole or a council meeting. So, uh, I don't see any discussion, so please call the roll.
Earl Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kershner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? It's away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes, uh, six to zero to, uh, with council member Bird, uh, out of the room.
Okay, next up is AB two zero two zero dash four one six, a resolution approving the Birch Bay Water and Sewer District Comprehensive Sewer System Plan Update. And that's pages three hundred and sixty-eight to three hundred and ninety-two. Um, that passing committee three to zero and I so move.
Okay, discussion on this motion. See none, please call the roll.
Kathy Kershner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird, it's away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with council member Bird out of the room. Uh, thanks, Carol. We'll move now to, uh, the council criminal justice and public safety committee. We have a resolution before us today. It was AB twenty twenty dash four oh six, resolution supporting Watcom County Sheriff Deputy, deputies, corrections deputies and law enforcement officials across the county in response to the increased attacks on law enforcement across the county. Uh, we had a long discussion on two, uh, resolutions that had been presented. And we had a motion for, uh, council member Brown and Kershner to work on that together and they have. And they've delivered a product to us. So that is the version of this resolution that is up for consideration. Did everybody get that? No.
I, I'd like to add that Kathy was very easy to work with. We had it done in what, ten minutes?
I was going to say, you guys pulled it off really fast. Congratulations.
I can move to approve the unified, uh, resolution.
One moment, Mr. Sudu. Can we get a second? I'll have a second. Uh, Buchanan seconds, uh, Mr. Sudu.
Never got a copy of the resolution.
Kenrod, council staff, please send that to Mr. Sudu.
Yes, I'll do that right now.
Thank you. Uh, council member Donovan.
I just want to thank and commend, uh, council members Kershner and Brown for, um, putting those two things together. We had two resolutions in support of law enforcement and calling out some of the horrific things that have been happening to folks working in law enforcement and also trying to recognize the challenges and policing as, uh, related to racism and racial injustice. And I think the phrase I was using, I think they threaded the needle, um, and pulled that together. Um, alright, thank them for that.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, council member Donovan. They just, you guys did a wonderful job. Um, other discussion on the, uh, motion? Okay, let's vote.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird, it's away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kershner?
Yes.
That passes six to zero to, uh, with council member Bird out of the room. Okay, um, is there some, yes, Ben?
Is there any way we could have Kathy read that resolution? Since nobody's.
That's kind of unusual, but what, what, why was you, what's your reasoning?
So people can hear it.
Oh, people can hear it? Uh, that's fine with me. If, if we, if council is willing to put in the time on that, I'm, I'm fine with it. Yep. Good. Go ahead, council member Kershner, if you would.
Okay, hang on, I'm just pulling it up. Alright, um, the statement, resolution number, I'm not sure what number it'll be assigned. Statement of support and appreciation of the Watcom County Sheriff's Department, Watcom County Sheriff Deputy, Watcom County Correction Deputy and Support Staff. Whereas Watcom County Sheriff's and Correction Deputy along with their essential support staff perform services that are vital to public safety and the administration of justice and whereas Watcom County Sheriff's Office Corrections Deputy are responsible for the custody, security and safety of many potentially dangerous people and are exposed to many inherent dangers. When trouble arises, our deputies willingly accept the responsibility to run towards danger rather than away. And whereas as a community, we ask our Watcom County Sheriff Deputy to be prepared at every call to determine if they need to prevent, detect and investigate criminal activities or connect victims and others in need to social services, mental health, drug and alcohol treatment options. And whereas as of September eleventh, two thousand and twenty, FBI data reports thirty-seven law enforcement officers have been reported feloniously killed in two thousand and twenty. Eight were victims of an ambush, entrapment with premeditation. Two were a victim of unprovoked attack, including police officer Shoup of Bothell, Washington Police Department, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. And whereas on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, the Ferndale Border Patrol Facility was vandalized with violent messaging against border patrol agents. And whereas on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, a fire at the home of a Washington State Patrol trooper in the Everson Nook Sec area is being investigated as an arson. And whereas for decades, governments across the nation have asked law enforcement to provide frontline intervention and assessment of cases of mental illness while often being unwilling to provide the funds necessary to equip officers with the tools to identify and respond to mental illness appropriately. Which has led to both citizens and police calling for more money to be spent on alternative ways to respond to situations that don't involve the use of law enforcement. And whereas one of the causes, some communities have been unsuccessful in reducing racial injustice and overly aggressive responses by members of law enforcement who have proven to be poorly suited to the job is the lack of proper funding to hire strong leadership capable of change management, extensive screening and testing of new applicants, adequate ongoing training, supervision and oversight. And whereas recognizing that alternative programs are not a new concept to our community that the Watcom County government has for many years worked with the Watcom County Sheriff Department, Watcom County Jail deputies and staff, the Watcom County Courts and other agencies in de-escalation and other non-traditional law enforcement techniques and justice options. And whereas listed in alternatives which are attached are some of the things our community has already been funding for many years to promote racial justice, reduce incarceration and recognize that many may, that many need mental health or substance abuse treatment rather than incarceration. Yet we all acknowledge it is but a base from which further progress must be, must and will be made. And whereas the community wants us to continue, A, reducing the number of incidents involving the use of deadly force by funding our long-established, ongoing training of sheriff and corrections deputies on forced response and de-escalation, effective techniques for intervening with those undergoing behavioral health crisis and use of non-lethal techniques and equipment. And B, leveraging our mental health deputy program, crisis negotiation team, community policing through neighborhood and resident deputy programs, et cetera. And whereas calls to cut law enforcement funding in response to problems experienced elsewhere in the country, if applied here, would negatively impact local law enforcement's involvement in the existing alternative social and criminal justice programs our community has been investing in for years. And whereas calls to cut local law enforcement funding would be, would by necessity result in, A, delaying deployment of sheriff deputy's body cameras which hold both officers and offenders accountable to the objective recording standards that only video can provide, and B, reduce training, supervision and oversight. And now therefore be it resolved that Watcom County Council supports and appreciates our sheriff's deputies and corrections deputies, the Watcom County Courts and their respective support staff, plus the many other local agencies who work alongside them to keep the safety and health of all members of Watcom County our top priority. And be it further resolved, the Watcom County Council condemns these and all acts of violence against law enforcement officers. And be it further resolved that Watcom County Council supports and appreciates the need to promote further racial and economic justice that in doing so, we acknowledge both our historical failings and progress and fully commit to continue to do more in the future. And be it further resolved that Watcom County Council asks our community to step forward to promote racial justice by, A, continuing to provide, provide financial support for, A, our investment in a qualified and skilled law enforcement agents, agency, and B, the alternatives listed along with the law enforcement ongoing participation in these programs. And be it further resolved, the Watcom County Council is committed to ensuring our county is a safe and welcoming place to live and visit and believe that there is more that unites us as a community than that divides us when it comes to public safety. And be it finally resolved that Watcom County Council asks all our community members to continue to work with us to eliminate racial and economic injustice by being vigilant and rejecting the often unconscious implicit bias that can exist in hiring, renting, accommodation, providing or purchasing goods and services in education and other opportunities. Adopted this twenty-ninth day of September, two thousand and twenty.
Thanks, Kathy. That was a mouthful, huh?
It was.
Yeah. So, uh, okay, well, we've already voted on it. Uh, what I'm going to ask now is if another member of the finance committee would please take the helm and walk us through that agenda, starting back on the consent agenda. Since Mr. Bird has not, uh, checked back in yet.
I'm happy to do it or I'm happy to defer to Ms. Kershner.
Okay, which one do you want to do it?
Go ahead, Red.
Okay. Alright, the consent agenda, um, I'm just trying to think, just, I, I need a little bit of help. Which ones did we not pass?
I think those were on other items. I don't know if anything can consent agenda. We did not pass three sixty-eight and three ninety-six and four oh five, but I don't know if those are on the consent agenda.
Four oh five is on the consent agenda. What was that one?
Twenty twenty, three sixty-eight, twenty twenty, three ninety-six did not come out of committee and twenty twenty, four oh five.
Yeah, it looks just to be, uh, that four oh five.
Okay, so, uh, I, items one through eleven and then thirteen to fourteen were passed in the committee and, and the consent agenda and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Uh, any discussion on those items? Mr. Schroder?
Yeah, Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive. I just want to make sure the council, um, is moving on the, the contract amount for four hundred and seventy-five thousand for the food banks. Uh, the, the title is different, but there's a revised, a contract that the finance committee moved forward this morning. And then also.
Item fourteen.
Correct, item fourteen. Agenda Bill, uh, twenty twenty four twelve. And then also, uh, uh, updated contract. And then also, a, a updated contract for Pogo Zone, which is item thirteen, Agenda Bill, twenty twenty-four ten. Just to make sure the record's clear on which ones you guys are moving forward. Thank you.
So, um, so you are correct, four twelve, four twelve was four hundred and seventy-five thousand. You said that the updated Pogo Zone, does that change the amount or not?
No, the amount's a hundred and ten thousand, uh, and it'll be able to get approximately a hundred and eighty households.
Okay, and then you reminded me that in item four zero two, it's not the COVID-ten emergency, it's the COVID-nineteen.
Correct. That was amended in committee.
It was, it was, thank you.
Okay, uh, if there's, so it's been moved for approval. If there's no further discussion, uh, if you call or vote.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
I'd just like to point out that my flawless internet tonight is provided by Zipley Fiber. So, Pogo Zone and all these other folks, they might want to take note on how to do this. And maybe, um, maybe you need some help with your, with your city internet there, Councilmember Bird.
He can't even get his phone to work, so.
Keep jinxing yourself, Ben. I'm, I'm not saying anything.
You are jinxing yourself, Ben. I, I, I'm gonna be surprised if you make it through the rest of this meeting.
I don't believe in that stuff.
You don't? Okay.
I'm a baseball fan. Everything's about jinx.
Says the guy got hit twice coming out of the same driveway. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, uh, we have that motion for these, uh, items on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call and roll.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Yes.
This is Dana Brown Davis. I just want to check one item, um, which, if I look back at my notes, never mind. I've answered my own question. Sorry.
Okay, please call and roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? It's away still. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes, uh, five to one, and Councilmember Bird out of the room. So that brings us to number twelve.
I would move to approve item twelve, AB twenty, uh, twenty four oh five.
Second?
Donovan moves. Brown seconds. Discussion. Okay, seeing none, please call and roll.
Tyler Bird is away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Absolutely not.
Carol Frazi?
Absolutely, yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes four to two with, uh, Councilmember Bird out of the room. So, Mr. Brown, and then on to other items from Finance. Unmute, please.
I was just wondering if anybody noticed where I was sitting at the moment.
Looks like you're in Sat Paul's office, or any.
I was gonna, I was gonna just.
On the same room, or the same background.
Point it out that we are twins like Danny DeVito and Schwarzenegger.
I know, and you guys are right next, you guys are right next to each other in my, my screen, and I'm going, that's like a mirror image.
That's funny. I don't know how could it clone that?
Rod's way taller than Danny DeVito.
Yeah, which one's Danny DeVito?
Yeah, thank you very much.
You guys figured, you guys figured it out. By the way, I'm Schwarzenegger, so you can figure it out.
Okay.
Let's terminate this.
I've had it done for half an hour. None of you noticed. It's quite funny. All right, um, so that passed, then we're on to, um, AB, and, and Kathy, I'm gonna have to ask, Kathy Holker, I'm gonna have to ask you to help me out on that. The vote count, if you can tell me the vote count at the end of each of these, it's probably the easiest way to do it. Uh, next item up.
The vote count for our committee, you mean?
Correct, yeah. Next item up was AB twenty twenty, just three eighty-three. Request to cancel, cancel approval of the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan Update. And the vote was, I believe it was three zero. Ms. Holker?
Just give me one second. Three zero.
Three zero, okay. But it was three zero, and I submit.
Okay, council, discussion on that motion? Mr. Ellenboss?
What number was it again? Sorry.
Twenty twenty dash three eighty-three.
The Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan Update.
Okay, other discussion on the motion? Please call and roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is still away.
Okay, that passes six zero with Bird absent. Next item up is AB twenty twenty dash three five seven. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into contract between Wachem County and Washington State Department of Ecology, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Washington Conservation Corps Crew Agreement. Council acting as the Wachem County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. And Ms. Holker, what was the vote?
Three zero.
Three zero. The vote was three zero, and I submit. And this, yeah.
Discussion on this motion. Okay, please call and roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes six zero with Bird absent. Next item up is AB twenty twenty dash three five six. Request authorization of the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Wachem County and the Wachem County, sorry, the Wachem Conservation District to amend the twenty nineteen inter-local and sub-receipient agreement for the pollution identification and correction program, non-dairy agricultural technical assistance in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for total amended contract amount of five hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Council again acting as the Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. Ms. Holker, the vote was?
Three zero.
Three zero, and I submit.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion. Please call and roll.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes six to, uh, six to zero with Councilmember Bird out of the room.
Next item up is AB twenty twenty to three six eight, ordinance amending the twenty twenty Wachem County Budget Request Number seventeen in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars, and the vote was?
Can you back up to the one that was added via revision notice, uh, twenty seventeen? Four seventeen, please?
Uh, I don't have that on my.
I can read it. It's in Legis or.
Yeah.
Or should Kathy, she, I'm not on the committee, but it's AB twenty twenty four seventeen, request for the county executive to enter into an inter-local agreement amendment between Wachem County and Washington State Department of Health to provide funding for the delivery of various public health programs and services in the amount of five million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars for a total amended contract amount of ten million eight hundred and ninety thousand and seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. And that was added nine twenty-five twenty, and I can't remember the vote in committee.
Vote was two zero one with Brown away.
Somebody lost internet.
Okay, uh, and, uh, someone so moves?
So move.
Discussion, Councilmember Ellenboss?
As is always the case when we have bunched up things, I would like us to vote on them individually.
Other discussion on the motion? Okay, please call and roll.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
That passes five to one with Councilmember Bird out of the room.
And, and Ellenboss opposed.
And Councilmember Ellenboss opposed, yes.
Next item up is AB twenty twenty three six eight, ordinance amending the twenty twenty Wachem County Budget Request Number seventeen in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. I think you said this received a, no, you didn't tell me what the vote was, Ms. Holker.
I believe this one failed in committee with Kerschner and Bird opposed and Brown in favor.
Okay. It failed in, failed in committee, but I move it forward for consideration by the full council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Donovan seconds. Uh, I got two folks with their hands up, Mr. Ellenboss and then Ms. Kerschner.
I changed my vote on the prior one to yes, because I thought we were voting on this one, on the last one. And my comment would be the same thing. When they're bunched together, can we break them up? So Kathy Holker, can you change me to a yes vote on the Conservation District one? I thought we were voting on Budget Amendment seventeen.
I'd like to defer to Dana Brown Davis on that one.
You'll need to go back to that item and move to reconsider the vote and retake it, please.
It's not the Conservation District, but it was item four in Legis star, which is the, um, Health Department funding. And then the supplemental one is the one coming after that.
So it would be AB twenty twenty four one seven. Someone should move to reconsider the vote on that, and then move it again and retake the vote, please.
Don't worry about it, Barry. It won't change anything.
But you're on record, Ben. That's good.
County, Barry?
I said, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay, all right. So is there any further discussion on this item? Oh, sorry, Ms. Frey, Mrs. Kerschner.
Ms. Kerschner had her hand up, yes.
Um, I would move to remove, uh, item number one to appropriate fifty thousand dollars in council to fund Cascadia Law potential fossil fuel litigation.
So, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Ellenboss seconds it. Discussion. Seeing none, would Ms. Holker please call the roll on the motion to amend to remove item one?
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird? Away. Todd Donovan?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I thought I saw Ben's hand going up for discussion, so the motion is to remove an item. I, I vote no on that.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
No.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
No. That fail, that fails two to four with Kerschner and Ellenboss in favor and Bird absent. Now we're back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion?
Councilmember Ellenboss?
I'd make a motion that we would separate all six of these items and vote on them individually.
So there's a motion to that. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for a discussion. I don't think it's gonna pass, though.
Ellenboss moves. Kerschner seconds. Discussion. Mr. Ellenboss?
I don't see a reason why any of these items shouldn't stand on their own two feet, just like all the other items that we just went through to discuss.
Further discussion? Please call and roll.
Tyler Bird is away. Todd Donovan?
I'd no on separating them.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
No.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
No.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
That fails two to four with Ellenboss and Kerschner in favor and Bird out of the room. Uh, now we're back to the main motion. Any further motions to amend? Seeing none, Ms. Holker, would you call and roll?
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
That passes four to two with Bird absent and Ellenboss and Kerschner opposed.
I, I have a different count. I have five, five to one with Councilmember Bird out of the.
I thought, I thought Ms. K.
I voted yes.
Oh, I'm, my polish, my polish. So, all right, five to one with Ellenboss opposed and Bird over. Next item up.
Uh, Councilmember Ellenboss has a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my question would be for, um, the administration or whoever puts these packets together and groups these items. How is it that these items get grouped together versus any of the other items? Why don't we just throw every, every budget item into one resolution and then vote on it? It seems like it would just save a whole bunch of time, like.
Uh, let me answer that. I don't have that much experience in this position. It's less than a year, and Tyler can speak of, uh, he has much more experience than I do. Because this is a living process, and we are managing the organization as big as county government. These things are fluid. We don't control. Let's get these things, item, group them together and put it in, and let's take this item maybe out and wait for a month and let's put it in that time. There is no conspiracy behind this, sir. This is, this is the flow of items. Legislature, Legis star is a transparent document. The things come from the departments, things come from independent elected people like prosecutor, like sheriff, like auditor, like, uh, trader, like us, by department heads, and they move through a process of approvals. And, and then, within those two weeks, we group those items. So I just wanted you to know, everybody to know, it is a elaborate process, and there are five staff members involved in putting these things together. I actually see them more or less when these things are put together. And, uh, and, and, yes, it, I, and I made a point earlier also. There are three to four hundred items we do in a year. I don't know the exact count, but lots of items which come to that, uh, ten council, uh, and twenties council meetings we have in a year. And, and we have to move them through, and they are timely needed by different departments. Different, uh, grants we get, we have to prove them. Different, uh, budget changes come, we have to prove them. They are both revenue and expense related. And if we start writing two hundred some ordinances every time, i- i- And if we start writing two hundred some ordinances every time, i- i- you can imagine the time it will take by staff. And 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 the council and other things, uh, that, okay, thank you.
So I I might be able to shed a bit of light on this and Mr. Schroder can correct me if I'm wrong. But there's two parts of this, is the allocation of the money and then there's the awarding of the contract and the awarding of the contract is separated out. But the allocation of the money to the different budgets, the budget buckets is done collectively because it's, it's a number of different things. So you still get, you still get the individual word on the actual contract. Um, just Donovan and Mr. Ellenboss.
Brad, I think you you're, you forgot who's chair in the meeting. Well, I don't care, but.
He's both chair and executive in that office.
Yeah, he was kinda really loading up on the title.
I'll shut up because we're still in the middle of finance and I was allocated finance and.
Tell me what you want me to do.
It's confusing.
Okay, Councilmember Ellenboss and then Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah, I just. So in order for me to be be able to vote yes on ballistic vests. I also have to vote yes on fifty thousand dollars to a law firm for a lawsuit that hasn't even happened yet because we have yet to do the unlawful act. So you see how that can conflict the guy, like? I wanna vote yes, I wanna vote yes on ballistic vests, I don't wanna vote yes on funding Cascadia law. So that's why I have a problem with grouping budget items that are completely unrelated into one, into one item that we're voting on.
Not true, council has the full authority to separate them out.
I will continue to vote no.
We just went through that, just five minutes ago.
Right.
Just went through that process, that process still.
I made a motion to separate them out so I could vote on different things.
And the council didn't want to do that, that's not in our control.
Absolutely. Absolutely, executive, if you brought them up one at a time, I wouldn't even have to make the motion. Okay, so you can fix it or I'll make that motion every time. Um, but if these agenda items. If, they should be able to stand on their own two feet and we shouldn't be able to vote on them individually because they're unrelated.
And the council and the administration have worked like this last thirty years. This is not something which is new and council has been uh, either uh, 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 one way or the other, council votes uh, uh, in in sometimes partisan way, that has been the process eh, eh, all all along.
I don't believe that's a true statement, I believe history will tell you that they didn't always get grouped like this. And if one council member had an issue, the other council members typically agreed with them just for for uh, their concern sake and they were split off. You can, you can ask some council members who may have been on the council before the last decade or so.
There have been complaints, why seven zero votes all the time, people have objected to that. And it, but you are suggesting that there should be seven zero vote, if one person says I object to that, then the rest of the council should go along with that. That will actually result all votes to be seven zero. And and there have been big objections about that in the public and constituents, why we have seven zero votes all the time?
We don't.
That's, that's exactly my point, we don't.
Councilmember Donovan?
Oh, I was unmuted this whole time. Um, I actually think, I think both uh, Councilmember Ellenboss and executives that are are kind of raising valid points here. We're a um, executive, our charter has an executive dominated system, um, since I've been on council. Uh, um, we have the supplemental budget resolutions where the executive tries to compartmentalize as many of these kind of incremental things that have to be done with the budget. We can look at like two items down, we have item seventeen, which is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, another supplement. But I think sometimes those come as one, sometimes they come as one or two, just depending on the timing and how things are coming out of agencies and 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 the executive branch. Um, but we do as a council retain, and we just did, you know, Mr. Siddy just said that the the, the power to move as Mr. Ellenboss did to have these things separated out, if there's a majority willing to do that. The idea, and and we discussed this in the interim, of if if every one of the supplemental budget requests came to us as a separate ordinance. Um, we we, that doesn't work in our sort of the the way we have our council executive balance set up. And if you're talking about a full-time council with a weak executive or something where we're doing stuff like that. It's a fundamentally different, different way of doing things, but I but I respect Mr. Ellenboss's, you know, it is, you don't wanna vote on something that you don't like, that's attached to all these other things, but the flip side is, how many hundreds of separate ordinances would would we have to do? So I, you know, I think in in our system, the supplemental request packaging these things is kind of way to try to balance that. Um, and we can always vote to pull those things out if there's a majority willing to do that.
Councilmember Kirschner?
I just have to laugh a little bit at what I'm hearing. Um, there's no reason whatsoever that these supplemental can't be presented individually with their own ordinances. I do understand that it is more efficient for the administration to put them all together. But back in the day, a decade ago, um, there's Councilmember Ward Nelson, who was uh, very fond of saying, I would like to bifurcate this. And what would happen is if there was an item in a supplemental, the the council member that wanted to pull it out and consider it separately would make that um, motion. And the council was usually very um, accommodative of that, so that that particular supplemental piece would be voted on separately from the whole ordinance. Um, and I did not make that motion tonight, I I made the motion to just remove it. Um, and so Councilmember Ellenboss, I suggest that if there are items in these supplementals that you'd like to consider separately, that you make that motion, that you consider that specific item separately and see if we can get the council to vote to allow you to do that. Otherwise, we can state if there are things we don't like in the supplemental, that we support all the other items, but not the one we are not um, willing to support and still vote yes on the entirety with that as a caveat in common.
Councilmember Brown?
So Mr. Ellenboss, I I I appreciate, there's always gonna be times when one or more of us does not want to vote for a particular thing, but and I just wanna make sure you do understand what you've done tonight, which is, there's a, there's a, we voted to put the bucket of money over here, which is the vote we just, we just talked about now. But you've already voted for the ballistic vests in the earlier vote and you supported that. Cause that's the, that's the vote to support the contract to spend that money and you've also voted to oppose spending the money on Cascadia. So there's two parts to every, every transaction and you have been consistent with your philosophy, your your particular uh, priorities and I respect those, but you've been, you demonstrated consistency with that by those two votes early, earlier tonight. Does that make sense?
Okay, are we ready to move on? Are you still there, Ben, or are you frozen?
I'm just in awe.
I saw your eyes blink.
I'm in awe of how, uh, I'll bite my tongue.
Carrie? Okay, Councilmember Brown, you can pick back up the finance hat?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just worried now because I know Ben is gonna chew my ear off later on. Um.
I've got your number.
Yes, you do. Um, okay, so we're still, if I remember correct, Ms. Holger, we're still debating AB three six eight, is that correct?
No, we voted on three six eight and the next item is three seven one.
Okay, so the next item is AB twenty twenty-three seven one, ordinance amending Washington County Code two point zero nine public defender to reflect current standards of practice outlined under RCW one zero dot one zero one dot zero three zero and the ethical standards reflecting, sorry, relating to conflicts of interest outlined by Washington Court Rules of Professional Conduct. If I remember this past three zero, is that correct?
Yes.
It passes three zero and I say move.
Okay, the committee put this forward, uh, co- uh, comments on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is away.
So that passes uh, six two zero with Councilmember Bird out of the room.
Next item up is AB twenty twenty-two three seven seven, ordinance amending the twenty twenty-Watchen County Budget Request Number eighteen in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and the vote was?
The vote was two one with Bird opposed.
Uh, but it was two one, Bird, Bird opposed and I say move for consideration by the full council.
Discussion on the motion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is away, Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes uh, five to one with Ellenboss opposed and Councilmember Bird out of the room.
Next item up is AB twenty twenty-three nine six. Request authorization with the county executive to enter into this memorandum of agreement between Washington County and Peace Health, St. Joseph Medical Center and Opportunity Council and Unity Care Northwest to initiate a capital campaign for the construction of the weigh station at the county-owned building at fifteen hundred State Street in Bellingham. That will provide services to people who are homeless and living either in shelters or are unsheltered. This received the vote of.
It was held in committee, I move to approve it.
I can't.
It Donovan moves and Frazee seconds, discussion, Councilmember Kirschner.
Uh, when I read this, I was thinking fifteen hundred State was our forest street facility, but it's not. And so I'm wanting to know what is our county-owned building at fifteen hundred State, is that our coroner's office or? Yeah. So I voted against this in committee because I thought Councilmember Bird brought up a good point that we need a presentation on this um, project and what uh, what the scope and idea of this project would be. Um, and and now I might be even more concerned about it because what would happen then to our coroner's office and all of the staff that work there? If we turn this into the weigh station? So I'm not opposed to a project like this, but I would like more information about it in the form of a presentation by the parties that are involved. So Peace Health, Opportunity Council, Unity Care Northwest and um, whoever's working on that, m- most likely from our health department within the county.
It it seems to me that this, that this request on this particular agenda bill isn't, well, isn't asking for any money. It's Tyler Schroder, you could correct me if I'm wrong or jump in, it, what it's doing is, it would start the conversation due, with this memorandum of agreement in order to maybe have that presentation to the council before we took any action to uh, to put any, any funding forward. Tyler, is that close?
Oh yeah, Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, uh, yeah, that is accurate. There was a a presentation that I think most council members um, was able to attend in June. Uh, that Opportunity Council, Unity Care and Peace Health uh, did as it relates to the idea of the weigh station. Um, they would be co-locating those facilities likely on the first floor of fifteen hundred State Street. Uh, leaving the second floor for county operations, uh, moving forward and leaving the coroner's office in that same location and the morgue in that same location. Uh, so uh, Peace Health has offered four hundred thousand dollars to do some preliminary planning on the effort. Uh, that would really kind of provide the information that council, I think, is looking for. Uh, maybe a little bit more than that, honestly, just because of the amount of of money that they'd like to contribute into it. And there really is no, um, there there, the commitment from the county is to partner with them in that first phase. And then make a decision when there's a capital campaign accomplished and when there's a better understanding of what the project will entail. Uh, to work through a longer lease, um, or even sell the building at that point. So there will be some uh, administration decisions on, of course, uh, the the health department operations, it's currently at State Street. Um, but that wouldn't be for more, that that'd be about a year or two out, it would be more like twenty twenty-two like.
Thanks Tyler, uh, Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I think it's, it's fair for, um, it's good for for folks to wanna have a presentation on this. But um, Peace Health is committing four hundred thousand dollars, something like that. Um, just to kind of see how this is gonna work, um, so I'd like to encourage them by by being on board and moving forward with this. And as far as that property, um, we do have to find a new building for the morgue, right? I mean, that's been on our capital facilities thing for a while. Um, and so, so I mean, something has to happen with that building. Um, but but right, we're not really committing to anything except having them, having Peace Health commit to a fundraising drive and getting us more information on this, that's how I understand.
Yeah, I have Ellenboss and Kirschner and then Mr. Brown.
On page seventy, it says, Walkham County, upon commencement of a capital campaign, Walkham County will complete negotiations to lease this county-owned property of the weigh station collaborative, collaborative partners for a period not to exceed thirty years. With an option for lease renewal at the rate of one dollar a year. Additionally, the county will consider selling the property to one of the partners prior to the end of the initial lease term. Walkham County is not obligated to make capital contribution related to the project. Walkham County is not obligated to pay for operational costs or services provided by everyone we've talked about. But Walkham County will work collaboratively to secure appropriate operational funding. Walkham County may house other social service agencies and programs on the second floor of the fifteen hundred State Street property, including but not limited to do health department services, emergency medical services and other health services similar to the Grace program. So it sounds like with this capital campaign that we vote for now, it'll lock us into a lease. But nothing else, is that, am I reading that correct, Mr. Schroder?
Yeah, and their language, will complete negotiations, is allowing for that negotiation process to go through. Um, when you, when you read it out loud, Councilmember Ellenboss, honestly, complete negotiations, um, may lock us into it, but I I don't believe that was the intent, I believe the intent is when the capital, capital campaign is accomplished, we would work through those negotiations with the, with the parties.
Councilmember Kirschner?
Um, has the city of Bellingham been involved and consulted in this project? Um, I mean, a- as I'm reading this, it it appears that we are um, commencing upon another um, facility in downtown Bellingham that would uh, serve home, the homeless population. And I'm not saying I'm against that, I'm just saying that it seems like the city of Bellingham may wanna weigh in on um, if this is into their plan for how they would like to serve the homeless population in their downtown core. So we'll have the lighthouse mission, we have base camp and now we would have, what's this called, the, the way?
The weigh station?
The weigh station, yeah.
I, I, I don't know, so I do know that um, the. I I don't know. So I do know that um the contract sheet or the the informational sheet that's in the council agenda's packet uh does recognize that City of Bellingham is a supporting and consulting partner on the project as well as Lighthouse Mission and C M O.
Councilmember Brown?
Um, I just one comment I, and Mr. Schroder probably remembers these conversations from a couple of years ago, but I would just caution about the idea of moving the uh the morgue because it's much more expensive than it looks like on the surface. I think I think we worked out or the discussion at the time was million dollars, maybe two. Does that sound about right?
It's not.
It's got horrible permitting and environmental issues associated with building a new one, so.
Yeah, so Tyler kind of not shaking his head when I said that, but it kind of.
Yeah, I'll do a little bit of background. So um, you know, as we did purchase the State Street property, uh, one of the main reasons was to secure the morgue to move forward. The other reasons originally was to maybe place uh planning development services or consolidated health department into that facility. After we did those planning exercises, uh both of those departments to consolidate there are too big to be located at State Street. Um, we then looked at relocating the morgue. Uh, and uh Councilmember Brown's correct, the the cost of that type of essential facility is pretty substantial. Uh, but there is a need for some work to happen at State Street to make it a longer term building for um our future and whatever needs we have in that in that facility. Um, so I see it as an opportunity to have some community partners to do some of that work on our behalf as well as a look to accomplish a need that 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 the community has kind of recognized, which is the details to the respite care and the the way station, uh while um also investing some money into our county facilities and accomplishing uh the second floor for for space for ongoing moving forward. Um, you know, the one detail is we currently have health department staff working there, and I want to be real cognitive to that because they're uh working very hard at that location as we speak today. Uh, the way station conversation came up earlier this year, really, uh prior to a lot of that, but if, as we talked about two weeks ago, the capital uh planning of Northwest Annex uh redevelopment and the civic center being able to be utilized for the health department would be the solution there, the domino to fall to allow for a project like this to move forward in State Street. Uh, so I tried to write the 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 M O U in a way with the partners that recognized our commitment. I recognize the ability to use their funds, uh but also recognize that there are a couple dominoes that have to fall into place before the county can truly commit to moving forward with utilizing State Street property.
Mr. Ellenboss?
So Mr. Schroder, you mentioned City of Bellingham, but in all this paperwork, I don't see it mentioned anywhere. Can you repeat what you said about the City of Bellingham?
I will. Uh, Councilmember Ellenboss, if you have access to Legistar or in your hard packet, I don't know the um the 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 number, but there is a document that is called um the project information flyer, which is a a one or two page document that gives the way station and background, additional background to it.
Page seventy five. Page seventy five.
That's the one. That's the one, Councilmember Ellenboss. The page right before at the bottom uh recognizes the unique collaboration involving many partners uh and in this supportive and and consultative partners is is the City of Bellingham, Lighthouse Mission and C M O. This was developed, this document was developed back in June when there was kind of a community outreach on the topic. Uh, and and so that's as 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 I know is is the City of Bellingham at least was was supporting uh this type of project to move forward.
Uh, Councilmember Donovan?
I was going back a bit, I but I was just responding to um Councilmember Kerschner's um point concern about the amount of services that are gonna be downtown and and Base Camp. Um, the city is told us that it's gonna be a three or four year contract there and then they're gonna find a different facility. And I think it's important that we keep remembering that. And that's not a critique of Ms. Kerschner. That's I just wanna keep the city remembering that thing. That's what they said.
Other discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird is away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Uh, no, and not because I don't support the project, but because I still feel like we need more info. No.
Okay, that passes five to one with Mr. Ellenboss opposed and Mr. Bird out of the room.
They're on the Seds. Roger.
Uh, next item up is A B twenty twenty dash three eight eight. Resolution accepting the twenty fifteen comprehensive development strategy, Seds Project List Update. Ms. Holker, the vote was?
Three zero.
Three zero and I so moved.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Mr. Ellenboss?
You guys move real quick, so can you give me a minute to get to the page so I can refresh exactly what this title is?
We sure can.
Okay, I recall now. Carry on.
Thank you. Okay, uh, discussion? Let's put it up to.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? Away. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird out of the room.
Next item up is an amendment two to Resolution twenty nineteen uh for unrepresented Watkin County employees. The number on this one is A B twenty twenty dash three ninety two. And the vote, I believe, was three zero.
The vote was two zero with Councilmember Brown away.
I thought I could be right once. Okay.
You're in the internet hole.
Yeah, zero and I so moved.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Mr. Ellenboss?
Give me a minute. I'm still flipping to the page.
Ms. Kerschner?
Uh, while Councilmember Ellenboss is finding the page, um, I just wanted to say that during the committee, we talked about this and I brought up that uh with all of the additional um COVID funding that's coming into the county, uh, I think that we as a council may wanna look at rather than um continuing the furloughs and the the current situation with our staffing, that we look and see if we've got a a sufficient amount of funding to bring our um workforce back to work. And this uh particular agenda bill is about um being flexible in their um paid time off and letting them move it to twenty twenty one uh rather than lose it this year, which I am supportive of, but I'm also supportive of taking a a hard look at where we are financially to see if our staffs can be um re, you know, their hours can be reinstituted at at forty hours a week if that's if they were full time or, you know, back to where they were before this crisis occurred. So I just would like to put out there that if our um administrative and finance departments um who've been giving us pretty good updates on our current financial situation, if there's a way that we can reverse our furlough staff, um, I would be in support of that.
Okay, other discussion? Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, that was something I was kind of wondering too, because uh the discussion revolved around leadership basically was the ones who had got the P T O and the vacation time, not been able to take it and um if if they were filling in for the hourly representative employees that were that were furloughed, um, if that caused this, so um and I don't recall, I the question may have been asked in committee, but I don't recall what the answer was. Did they discuss, so instead of kicking the can down the road to next year by carrying all this over, that did we discuss possibly a portion of that being able to be paid out, or is that not something that can be done?
Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, um, there wasn't a lot of conversation about payout this morning, as I recall. Uh, there is the ability to um cash out at fifty percent eighty hours uh for these unrepresented employees. Uh, but when we looked at the amount of overtime that the individuals have, uh, it's well greater than the three hundred and seventy two hours that the limit is right now. Um, and so we brought this forward mostly in thought that we didn't really want to have to cash out more than that at this point because of our financial reason and thought it was a better idea to allow for some carryover into next year uh to allow leaders in our organization uh to continue working on COVID related and financial iss- issues that we have um from now until the end of the year while also trying to take some time, which we take some time off uh because of the amount that they have, which we've sent out correspondence to them to try for them to accomplish that.
Okay, I see that Councilmember Bird is back with us. I was just gonna bring him up to speed. Uh, Tyler, we are at the very last item in finances. This is the last uh A B twenty twenty dash three ninety two. We've been through the consent agenda and through all the other items, so uh just to let you know uh Councilmember Brown has, he took the uh over the chair of your committee while you were away and uh he has proposed the motion for this item, A B twenty twenty dash three ninety two. So I just kind of wanted to get you back in the in the game, let you know where we were.
Thank you, Barry, and thank you, Councilmember Brown. Hi, Kathy, could you make me a participant or instead?
Yeah, for some reason I've been promoting you to panelist and it's not working. Did did you get a pop up window or?
No, we're just gonna call up the internet. It seems to not want me to be hanging out. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, so we have that motion on the table of for discussion. Is there any further discussion on the unrepresented Watkin County employees? Councilmember Ellenboss?
One more quick question for Tyler. So it raises the cap to four forty two for department heads and managers. So anything above and beyond that is lost to them then? Is that the deal? Or is no one above and beyond that?
No, that's the deal. If they don't use above and beyond, if they don't use the hours that they have above and beyond that, they would lose it. And that's all they can carry over for the next year.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, this is um refreshing on some of the stuff from the committee discussion that the department heads and the unrepresented folks who have been working really hard and not being able to use vacation time, um, this is addressing that, but I think the H R director told us as well that if the bargaining groups that represented folks came and approached with this similar concerns that 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 might also be on the table. I just I just wanna get it out there that like, there's lots of folks who are having their schedules really affected by this, who are working really hard. And this is taken care of. Some folks really deserve it. They might be others as well.
Okay, any any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously. Uh, we're moving now to uh the the council's planning and development committee. Mr. Ellenboss?
Okay, we're gonna test this rural internet.
Jinxed already, man.
Planning and development or public works?
We already did public work.
Okay, so uh we discussed A B twenty twenty dash three ninety seven, a resolution approving recommendation on one application for open space current use assessment. Pages three ninety six through four sixteen. And I believe that we voted to recommend to the council that we support planning commission and staff's recommendation to not approve the applicant's open space application.
And you so move?
I so move.
Okay, discussion? Please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, that's, so uh, yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Our next item was um A B twenty twenty dash four one four. Discussion regarding proposed ordinance amending Watkin County Code twenty four dot zero two mobile home park regulations to create additional housing options within mobile home parks. Pages four seventeen through four twenty three. I don't believe we took official action on this other than to say that Councilmember Bird and Kerschner were going to continue down the path that they were going here. Working with planning and development to update all the code that would need to be updated to make this a viable option.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Anything, not that, is that everything from planning?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, we move to council appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Uh, first one is A B twenty twenty dash three forty. Appointment to the Drayton Harbor Shellfish Protection District Advisory Committee, and the applicant is Patricia Erin Lulu. Uh, I would entertain a motion for a nomination.
I move to nominate.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Uh, discussion? Let's vote on it.
Tyler Bird?
Thank you, Barry.
I'm still, yeah, Ben. I'm still trying to get to the page.
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
I'm I'm still trying to get to the page. There's eight hundred and twenty eight of them. I don't have them all memorized.
I have no page numbers on anything. It's just all like Legistar.
Yes, Ben?
Um, I always ask it, is the applicant here to address us in any way, shape or form?
Kathy is uh the applicant on the on the meeting at all?
I don't believe so. There's one caller with a phone number ending in zero three nine. Um, I don't know if if that is the applicant Patricia Lulu, if you could raise your hand by dialing star nine. Nope.
Okay, so uh. Okay, so uh, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan, sorry, let me start over. Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes seven zero. Uh, next item is appointment, uh AB twenty twenty dash three sixty-two. Appointment to the Climate Impact Advisory Committee, and the applicants are Stephen Harold, Sue Gunn, Hunter Hassig, and Alec Howard.
Move to nominate all, and then we'll figure it out.
I'll second, okay. Uh, I thought Eddie had applied as well.
He withdrew.
Oh, he did? Okay, okay. I'll see that.
Okay, so uh we have a motion to second to nominate all uh applicants. Um, I don't have it right in front of me at the second. How many are, are we only nominating or I mean choosing one?
There's three positions and four applicants.
Thank you. Mr. Ellenboss?
Um, so in the past, I believe these were for, you know, someone that's involved in industry, someone that's an advocate, activist, whatever, right on down the line, or what are the three positions that are open right now? Are they just at-large positions or?
Kathy, can you help uh us out with that? Do you read the categories of the of the openings?
Yes, hold on just a second.
Barry, while she's looking that up, can I ask a real simple question?
Sure.
Um, do, do you have to be a citizen to apply for one of these boards? I know it's on the application, and we have one applicant that did not answer that question, so I'm just wondering if it's a requirement.
I think that got added while I was on council. Or registered voter or something like that. But don't, don't hold me that.
You have to be a, you have to be a citizen to be registered voter too, though, right?
But, but I kind of remember this discussion that Ms. Kirschner was mentioning, and I think, cause I, this came up, I think it was John, I saw it, there was somebody on the Shelfish Advisory Committee um who's a Canadian citizen that lived here, and that was an issue. Um, that's distant memory going back a couple, four years.
I have a description of the vacancy that I could read if that would be helpful. Um, there are three vacancies, partial terms expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three. Uh, prefer previous work or educational experience in subjects including climate change, renewable energy development, energy conservation, energy sector, waste reduction and recycling, farming, food security, land use planning, municipal government and flood mitigation and planning. Uh, the Wacom County Climate Impact Advisory Committee provides review and recommendations to the county council and executive on issues related to preparation and adaptation for and the prevention and mitigation of impacts of climate change. The key focus of the committee is building climate resilience in Wacom County through mitigation of greenhouse gases and adaptation to a changing climate. But it appears that these are three vacancies and they aren't specific.
And Kathy, you didn't, you didn't happen to see there the answer to Councilmember Kirschner's question about being a citizen? As a requirement?
Um, typically our boards and commissions require that the applicants um be residents of Wacom County. All appointees must live in and be registered to vote in Wacom County, and if applicable, meet the residency, employment and/or affiliation requirements of the position.
Well, that, I think that answers your question. Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I was just, I didn't notice that, um, but we had one applicant didn't, didn't check that, the gun application, um. But I don't know if we can infer from that that she's not a citizen or just didn't check that, but I think that question's on there because that was the residency slash voter registration thing looking for citizenship. I'm not saying I'm a fan of that, but that is a, that is a, I think that's part of the process there, so I, I, um, yeah, um, I, I mean, I, cause she's one of the, that's one of the applicants I would support, but um, I could see everyone to get that question answered, not that I think it's very important, but I think that is rule on a month.
I, I would move to, I would move to hold for two weeks uh and reach out to her and ask that question um if, if the council was so inclined to consider that.
I'd love to double check with which one you're talking, which um individual.
The gun, the gun application doesn't have the citizenship box checked off.
Okay, I'm looking at the, the question, do you live? And are you a registered voter in Wacom County? And she says yes, so that's what I thought you said.
Yeah, but the question before that is, are you, you, you can't be a registered voter and not be a citizen, so.
Right.
It's a bit awkward.
So I think by, I, I cancel my motion. I think that's, that's sufficient for me anyway.
Well, actually, I, 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 you're, cause I, I doubt this is a thing, but if somebody is registered to be a voter here and is not a citizen, then that's maybe a felony, not maybe it is. We should probably find out. I, I doubt.
Only a felony if they actually vote and they're not a citizen, um, but you could register to vote and not be a citizen. There is no database that checks that. And I'm not wanting to make that an issue in, in two guns situation here. I'm not, I don't want to accuse her of that at all. I'm fairly certain she is a citizen based on her resume.
Yeah.
Um, but uh she didn't check the box, so.
So maybe Mr. Buchanan, um, so I think we had a motion to nominate it all. Like, we could get rid of that motion, just do this in two weeks and figure out the answer to this question.
What's the will of the council? I'm, I'm, I'm easy. I'll go either way.
I think to clear up the ambiguity, we probably should ask her to answer that question.
Okay, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, yeah. I actually had her on my list to vote for as well. Um, so I, I, I'm leaning that direction, but at the same time, with the, without pact, our, our committees and, and councils meetings have been lately, the uh yeah, one more thing next week, not knowing what else is gonna be there, but I could go either way. The, the, the other three are definitely good applicants too, so I have no, no difficulty voting for any three of them or all three of them tonight, that that's what we want to do as well.
So who made the original motion to nominate? Todd, you want to withdraw it?
Yeah, I withdraw it. Um, so, um, I think we can dispose of this in thirty seconds when I can, I can, I mean, that issue, who, who the three of the four will be, right?
Yeah, that, that's not gonna clog up our agenda next in two weeks, so. Okay, so Todd withdraws the motion. Uh, is this, is the second of that motion seconder of?
It was me or Tyler, but I withdraw.
Okay. Okay, so we will move on. Uh, the next one is AB twenty twenty dash three eighty-four, request council approval for a criminal justice treatment account panel appointment. What's the will of the council?
Move approval?
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, uh, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Um, I, I'm not sure what, what, what exactly are we voting on here? There's nothing in the packet. It just says council approval for a criminal justice treatment account panel appointment. Who?
Kind of vague.
So we're, 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 are we voting to make a new panel?
I'd have to defer to staff. What, what, where did this come from? Uh, Todd, you know?
Well, no, we, we did discuss the um, the funding of, of the, that, this came up, not the actual panel appointments, but this came up in a discussion, I think in finance committee about who this panel was is defined by the RCWs.
Yeah.
Um, and um, but we didn't actually talk about this particular item, but that, this relates to the criminal justice um treatment account funding that was on, that we get recommendations, fund was on finance. And this, these are actually the people populating, I'm pointing at my screen right here, um, who are on this committee, and um, so we, we did touch this in, in finance.
Deputy Executive Shorter, do you have some info?
I can answer your question for you if you'd like. Dana Brown Davis.
Okay, go ahead, Dana.
Um, at the bottom of page seven eighty-six of your packet, it says the Health Department is asking for the approval of Carolyn Mason, Regional Director of Lifeline Connections as the Substance Abuse Use Disorder Treatment Agency representative on the panel. You've already appointed Stark Fallas, Director of Wacom County Planning, oh, sorry, Wacom County Public Defender's Office as the Criminal Defense Bar Representative, and the Health Department is asking you to appoint Carolyn Mason to the other position.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So it says that the Health Department created this panel according to the RCW. The Jaclyn Mitchell is the County Alcohol and Drug Coordinator, Eric Ritchie's the County Prosecutor, Alfo County Sheriff, Dave Reynolds, County Superior Court, Christine Furman, Drug Court Representative, and then two positions need to be appointed by council, a Substance Use Disorder Treatment Agency and a member of the Criminal Defense Bar.
Correct, and you've already appointed Stark Fallas to that position, and so they're just asking for the additional appointment of Carolyn Mason as the regi, she's the Regional Director of Lifeline Connections, and they'd like you to appoint her to the Substance Use Disorder Treatment Agency as the representative from that agency.
Councilmember Kirschner?
Uh, I would move approval of Carolyn Mason to the um Substance Use Disorder Treatment Agency position.
We have a Kirschner motion and a Frazee second. Discussion, Mr. Ellenboss?
Thank you, Kathy. Now I know what I'm voting for.
Councilmember Bird?
Yeah, the, we had the motion on the table, so we'd have to speed amendment.
You want to make an amendment? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I definitely made the.
The prior motion was to approve something that wasn't defined and.
It was, it was titled, it was the title of, and the uh AV number in the agenda, so we moved that, that was on the table for discussion, so it'd be an amendment.
Should we get rid of the original motion?
Let's do that. Todd, were you to? I don't know.
If it was me, I'd remove the original motion, but I, I.
All right.
Your bird moved Todd Donovan second.
We, we'll pull the original. Kathy's goes.
Okay, Kathy's motion is the one we're considering. Probably for clarity uh in the future, when, if they come back to us again for this, maybe a little more information in our agenda would be helpful.
And a better title.
And don't save the action item to the last sentence of the document.
A short title.
Okay, so any other discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Do we move on to introduction items? We have uh five items on our agenda today. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I will move to introduce.
Okay.
Donovan moves, Bird seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Brown, the Ghostbuster.
Item one is a particularly interesting one to put on the agenda. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that one. That is one that's caused a lot of controversy around the country.
Oh, yeah, interesting. Well, I'm sure we'll discuss this more at length.
That's fine. I'm just wanna draw everybody's attention to that. I, I don't have a problem with the discussion, but I.
It's interesting, cause I just heard a story yesterday or the day before that uh uh Bellican Police used to have their uh contract negotiations on television.
Oh.
That would be.
Back when it was ninety-three channels?
It was BTV ten, yeah, I don't know. So like Ben said, if you want. Okay, so uh items one through five, any further discussion? Please call the.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Uh, committee reports, committee, was there anything in finance? Uh, Tyler, that you wanted to add or talk about that we didn't vote on tonight?
Yeah, yeah, we had a presentation, or at least part of a presentation from uh Mike, who our emergency services manager, before some technical difficulties uh stopped it prematurely. So we've asked him to come back in two weeks and uh finish that presentation. The, I'll tell you personally, I'm very interested in this presentation because I was on the uh, the Wacom um, uh, what's the other one? I always forget it. The Wacom Prospect Board Meeting here this week. Um, and it really bothered me, so I'm hoping that you guys will, will dive into this with me in two weeks a little bit more, and um, what concerns me about that is last year, that board essentially put together a committee to go out and assess combining those two uh nine-one-one emergency call stations. And the committee hired, after, you know, a bunch of work, they hired a consulting firm to come in and do an analysis and to give a recommendation. Um, an analysis was done by this third-party organization, and they recommended essentially that both of those places be combined uh at the last meeting of, of last year, or after that, I guess, with this document, so um, their recommendation came back along with this committee um to do so, and yet on the first agenda meeting, when you had a bunch of new board members on there, with no discussion, there was a motion made to dissolve the committee and to not accept the report and, and delete both, both units separate. Um, again, there's no documentation, there's no minutes, there's no discussion about that. It's entirely contrary to what the report is. It's entirely contrary to all of the findings that they built up in the different analysis in there, as well as, as kind of the work that I was able to see from the committee itself. So we, the uh, I, I'm really curious, I mean, obviously, we know based on quorum rules that they're not supposed to have those conversations in private to be able to make that conversation, or, and so I, I'd like to know why that was made, why there was no discussion, why it was in contrast to that. Um, and then how that's more efficient, and that plays right into a lot of the data analytics that Mike was, was kind of going over with the call volumes um from that. It, I know that's been a part of our conversation lately, because we could see that there's a potential for a substantial savings there, and the more I think about it, the more I look at the number of staff members that they have available at any time to answer those calls, the more I feel like those two stations could probably be combined into our Emergency Command Center with the Sheriff's Office um to make one really holistic location um and save us even more money. So I want to see more of that presentation and have a chance to ask Mike some of that information and to get some more background on this and really figure out what. So I want to see more of that presentation and have a chance to ask Mike some of that information and dig some more background on this and really figure out what, what transpired there and why, why we're, we're not saving people the money. You know what bothered me the most about that, though, I'm going to point this out, could you ever in your, like, imagine your house is on fire? Or your spouse or child is like in a medical emergency, and you're afraid for their life, and you call nine one one, and they say, I'm sorry, I gotta put you on hold to transfer you to another representative. At another station? I mean, that's just mind-boggling to me, why we, why we would ask people to do that, but, um, but we do, so. Stay tuned, we'll learn more in two weeks.
Hey, anything else from finance?
No.
Okay, thanks, Tyler.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kerschner?
Can I just, uh, make a comment about some of the things that we talked about in finance today? One of them was, actually, maybe it wasn't in finance, but it has to do with money, uh, it's the, uh. It's the roughly two hundred and fifty thousand that we're considering spending on a social marketing campaign to convince, um, people ages eighteen to twenty-nine to. Wear a mask and practice social distancing to get a handle on the COVID spread. Um, I, I, uh, just, just been thinking about that, and again, just want to reiterate, with some of the things we're spending money on. I want to really make sure that our, our priorities are focused on getting our staff back to working normal hours. So. That's a creative, uh, way to spend money, for sure, and it could be effective, or it could not be. Um, but I really do think that with the extra additional money coming in, we need to look at how do we get our staff back, so I'll reiterate that one more time. Thanks.
Okay, uh, thank you, Kathy. You transitioned us into other items, so, uh, other items. Councilmember Donovan?
I was just going to do a natural resource committee update. We did, we haven't had these committees meeting, and we're going to start doing it again. At the rate we're going, we'd be starting at about seven thirty in the morning, or eight. So, and then I'm going to nominate Mr. Brown to chair that committee.
Uh, poor Rod. Other, other items. Councilmember Ellenboss?
I really want to know how Councilmember Brown cloned the executive's background.
I thought he snuck into his house last night, took a picture while he was sleeping.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if he broke any laws in the.
Screen capture, boom.
Uh, there's Rod again, sort of. Any other, other items, or council member updates?
Rod's under Sapols' desk.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Uh, uh, listen, I just used a simple Windows function, and I'm just going to let you guys work it out, because if you're not going to invest the time, I'm not going to help you.
That's screen capture.
By the way, don't leave your, uh, space with your camera on, because next time I'm going to clone your room.
You're going to have a John Deere tractor in your background?
Or in your living room, yeah. Councilmember Frazi?
Yeah, so I think, uh, Councilmember Brown's here, but I, I get my internet dropped a few times today, and I didn't get to, um, thank Councilmember Brown for bringing forward the, uh, money for the school. Allocated for the school in the distance learning. Um, you, Gina Stark and, uh, Councilmember Brown allocated the money and made that happen. Um, so that students have access and, uh, so they can keep, continue learning, so I appreciate that.
Well, and I, and I was happy for your support, too, Ms. Frazi. You were certainly very supportive on that issue as well.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So I think at the end of last meeting, I brought up that I'd heard that, um, we're losing an employer in Bellingham. Um, and that's since been confirmed, I believe. And now I'm hearing that Boeing may have just announced that they're moving the production of the seven eighty-seven. And that could possibly impact thirty thousand jobs in Everett. So. I'm hearing that maybe from Wall Street Journal report, but. Again, not good for our region.
Anything else for the good of the order, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, Ben, you know, I, I heard the hospitals actually starting layoffs as well. Is there truth to that, you know? Okay. It doesn't, it wouldn't surprise me with the lack of revenue for due to surgery, but, um, I'd like to know, have a little better idea of what that, that means.
I've actually heard the hospitals across North America are doing that because of the, um, elective surgery issues.
Yeah, that's, I've heard the same.
Any other council member updates? All right, everybody, have a great week, and we will see you again when we see you, so we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
The recording has stopped.